Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting.
Yep, apologies, mic was not on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, September 8, 2025. We're opening at, I believe it is 6:00 PM. We are in the Multi Service Center Room 520 at 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. And available via Zoom as listed with a link on the meeting agenda. And I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call. Mike?
Carl Schultz here.
Julie Moran here.
Sam Corbett here.
And Jane Gleason here. Preliminary business, the approval of the meeting minutes for August 25, 2025. We did not receive the draft of them yet, so we will have to postpone approval of those to our next meeting. And the next agenda item, I would like to move to other business, item eight on the second page of the agenda, to items one and two. The first is discussion and possible vote to reorganize the planning board with our new member and so...
I'd like to make a motion for Chair Jane Gleason, Vice Chair Carl Schultz, Clerk Julie Moran.
Any discussion? Anybody? No discussion?
Everyone willing to serve?
I guess everybody's signed up as willing to serve. Can we have a vote?
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I think. Moving along to item two under other business, discussion and possible vote of off-cycle meetings and venue change for October. Our regularly scheduled meetings in October fall on Indigenous Peoples' Day and the first day of town meeting, which would be the 13th and the 27th. So we are looking to, instead of meeting on the second and fourth Mondays, we're looking to meet on the first and third Mondays of that month, which would be the 6th and the 20th. And because we have a conflict with FinCom sitting at this table, we would be meeting in room, I don't know the room number.
27.
Room 27 in Town Hall. It will be available via Zoom. It will be taped, but it will not be televised for both of those meetings. And I think we probably should take a vote of the boards that that's acceptable.
I move...
Josh, do you have anything to add? Is there any issue with the Zoom and recording and all of that?
Nope, the Zoom will still be provided by Waring Cable Television. I will likely run the Zoom from the meeting. And it will be on cable, just not live. I believe it will be run after.
Okay, so from the taping?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any discussion?
I move that we reschedule the October meetings, the first meeting to be October 26th to October 6th in room 27 of Town Hall and to be broadcast over Zoom. And the second meeting to be held October 20th in room 27, also to be broadcast over Zoom. Both meetings will begin at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Obviously, we've already asked for discussion, so I think we can go right to a vote. Mike?
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
So we just need to adjust, making sure we get the agendas posted accordingly?
Correct, yes, the agendas will need to be posted accordingly. And I'm going to mention this ad nauseam during the meeting, so if people tune in for just a part of the meeting, they will hopefully hear it and get the information.
All right, so you will not be there on the 6th, right? Or you will just be coming back?
I will be back in time for the 6th.
So I have to work on the agenda for the 6th?
I can probably do that via phone from remotely.
Okay, let me know then.
Yes, we can work on that. So moving back up to item three, continued public hearings. The first item is project number 4-25, Plan 25-5, Kevin Welch, Site Plan Review for 2731 Cranberry Highway.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Can you state your name and spell it for our scrivener?
Sure, Jeff Delisi, D-E-L-I-S-I.
And where did we leave off last meeting?
So the last meeting, you asked us, you had a great idea to move the driveway entrance closer to the building.
Yep.
And two days after the hearing, we filed revised plans, which depicted that.
Yes.
It actually allowed us to pick up three more parking spaces because we had some area closer to the road that we were able to utilize. So net positive there. In addition, at the meeting, there was a discussion about a solid panel fence, which we added to the plan. And that was pretty much it. I think otherwise, we were in good shape.
Yep, I think that's right, that we were in good shape and there was just some final sort of tweaking of those items and making sure that the drawings jived with what we had talked about and looking through these before the meeting. It doesn't look like, I didn't see anything additional. Anybody else? Anybody with any comments? Okay, so I think we can move ahead to a vote or a motion.
But we do have that email.
What was the email?
Phil at 520, 2731. Did you communicate at all with Allen and Major's Phil Cordero?
Yeah, Phil's here.
Yeah.
So Phil, do you want to come up and...
Yeah, is there anything you wanted to add? I'm just looking at this email that we just received.
I have not received any email.
It was a late arrival.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. It was a very late arrival, and I apologize for that, also to the applicant. We weren't aware that he had submitted new information after the last meeting, so as part of due diligence for tonight, we were just checking the portal and we found that he had some documents. So we grabbed him real quick and we just wanted to make sure we put eyes on him from a technical perspective. So we do have a letter that we're prepared to issue. We've issued it as attached to that email. We'll get it to the applicant, where we have no technical issues with the revised plans. What I simply wanted to do is remind the board that when we had talked at the last meeting, there was one matter regarding the Conservation Commission and the Open Order of Conditions, which as I understand it, has now been issued. And we also had a discussion on total suspended solids, which is not a technical deficiency in their application. They've elected to utilize a more intensive site management program, which I applaud them for, so long as they keep up with it. It's our experience that oftentimes people will take credit for these numbers and not actually perform the work associated with them. So I was simply advising the board that that's what they've chosen to do here, to the extent you wanted to consider a condition that may be a little more record-keeping than you may do in the past, just to make sure that they follow through with what they're suggesting they will do. And then very lastly, very, very minorly, in their operation and maintenance report, which is a required component of the applications here and also with the Conservation Commission, they did have an error in terms of there are some items noted in there that are not on this particular application. We did not see a revised O and M produced for the applications. It doesn't change the intent, it doesn't change what they're attempting to do, it doesn't degrade from it in any way, but it's again, just that record-keeping process as we get across the finish line here. That's essentially what's contained within that memo from today.
Okay, so we haven't put our conditions together?
No, but we should definitely, those would be two that we might want to consider adding.
Yeah, and do we have the CONCOM decision on this?
You do, the CONCOM decision is online. I was actually just perusing it, perusing as we came through. And the reason it mattered, and I don't mean to beat the applicant up, is they provided a compensatory flood storage calculation on the plans, which is not a purview of the site plan review. It's really the purview of the Wetlands Protection Act and the Conservation Commission. We didn't agree with the calculation in terms of them adhering to those standards, but it really defaults to CONCOM. So what we were waiting for at the last meeting is what CONCOM's decision was and whether they would put any conditions on those calculations or not.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got some things to do on our end before we can really go to a vote.
Just perusing the order as it is available online, they made no unique mention of the calculation and approved the project.
Not sure the significance of that, it's not our purview.
Yeah, right, but we need their approval or...
Well, all we need is that the fact that they've issued an order of conditions.
Yeah.
They have, what it says...
And it's been recorded.
Just affect it, yeah. It's really not in our purview.
Yeah, it's just a matter of us putting our conditions together.
Having said that, Josh, if you wanted to inform the conservation agent of this question, we'd be happy to work with the commission to do what's necessary.
Cool.
And Josh, we'll need to work together on the list of conditions.
Yep, and I would also mention, we are, excuse me, still waiting for a comment from the fire department. I guess there was a changing of the guard, if you will, and we're just waiting for Captain Kraft to look over.
Okay, so if we're waiting for that, we can't close the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Right, because that would be additional information, and once we close the public hearing, we can't take any more information.
I understand. I was kind of hoping that the commission, that the board would close subject to that approval, because the quality of the access really hasn't changed in any material way. It just has been slid in a different direction.
A provisional... Does anybody else have a problem with that? Carl?
I can't vote, so my problem doesn't matter.
It always matters.
Well, then my opinion is we shouldn't close any hearing.
Until you've got that.
But I can't vote, so it doesn't matter.
Josh, and there was, did you get any feedback from the fire department when they could revise this? I know you just said there was a changing of the guard.
No, no, that question wasn't addressed.
So they've had it for 12 days, so...
They get 20, 20, 21?
21 would make sense.
21 from the submission of the applicant.
Correct. Yeah, I know.
What's that?
It's not the applicant's fault.
No, no.
There's no reason not to go forward.
And they did provide a plan showing it.
Yes, I saw that.
Not like they have nothing.
Right, right.
Only danger area there is I kind of side a little bit on this side of the board, because if we start setting a precedent contingent on every applicant comes in, they'll want the same thing, and I don't think that's fair.
Well, you know, the only...
I got to think about setting precedents, because if the first senior attorney comes in, well, you did it for this one, you will not do it for us, too. Well, I'm not afraid to say no, you know that.
Yeah, I don't think that's a fear you have to have, Mike, to be honest with you.
You don't think so?
Every project is unique. You could argue your way out of that pretty easily.
Look, the bottom line here is if a condition is imposed, which indicates that this revised plan is satisfactory to the fire chief or deputy chief, whomever that is, if it's not satisfactory, then it would require us to make some kind of modification, which would bring us back here.
But then that would make it a modification to the plan, and we'd have to go through the whole...
I know, yeah, we did.
Hearing again, and you'd have to open a new public hearing, you'd have to file a new application.
You don't want to do that.
No, you don't want to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, I mean, if you wanted to get technical.
That's been the process.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's probably in your best interest to make sure that you've got the fire department sign off.
Yeah, I just...
And I understand that...
Nothing I can do to push that forward at this point, you know? The plan is...
They've got their 21 days, and how much of that they take is up to them.
Yeah, I would say he's pretty good about responding for the other few applications I have been able to send to him.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll agree to a continuance, so...
Put you on for the 22nd.
How busy is that?
It's getting busy, but this should be quick. This should be, I mean, we're essentially there, except for the fire department.
Also give us an opportunity on the applicant, just to filter, to review your response as well, although we certainly trust that it sounds like it's fine.
But to review, to review what?
Phil's comment letter that...
That just came out.
Of course, yeah.
All right, so motion to continue to the 22nd?
We'd like seeing you, but I'm sure we're all ready.
You could begin working on the conditions.
On the conditions, right.
Exactly.
If we got the conditions together, it would give us all a chance to look those over beforehand.
Right, I think that's what we should plan to do.
Yep. So do I have a motion to continue to the 22nd?
It's a moment.
Second.
All in favor?
Mike, we have to use tag.
I'll abstain.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Jane Gleason, aye.
See on the 22nd, right?
Sounds good, yes, the 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I will not be here, but it should be okay. Carl's out here. Can't vote.
Moving along to our next continued public hearing, 8-25 DDO New England LLC for Site Plan Review, 2424 Cranberry Highway. Maybe we could start with you guys stating your names and spelling them for our scrivener?
Certainly. Attorney Michael Spillane, S.P.I.L.L.A.N.E.
Mark Raymond, DDO Foods. M.A.R.K., R.A.Y., M.O.N.D.
And Chris Tumula from Greenman Peterson, last name is T.Y.M.U.L.A.
And I need to swear you all in as your professionals. I think I missed one before, but if you could raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. So I'm going to give you the floor.
So last time we were here, we had gone through a lot of the particulars on the site. The town then engaged Allen and Major to do a peer review. We've gone back and forth with them. I think we've addressed most, I would say all but two, and maybe Mr. Cordero feels differently, but I think we're down to just a couple of minor, hopefully minor issues. One is, I know there's a light pole that is in the right-of-way to the east side of our property that's going to be moved. That was not intended to be in the right-of-way. And the other issue that was raised was relative to the landscape buffer. So just to kind of bring that one out to begin with, as the board may recall, we had filed for a variance for the use of the property as a restaurant with a drive-through and requested a variance from the side yard landscape buffer. There's an existing landscaping, shrubbery, trees on the east side of the property. There's also an easement, right-of-way easement with the Rockland Trust Company on the north side, and there's lots of vegetation that abuts that easement as well. We don't plan to do any construction within the easement area. There's a small overlap of the drive-through lane into that easement. So the reason we had asked for the variance was because it does, the property so narrows, and there is significant existing vegetation there, that, you know, that was why the reason we asked for the variance, and the zoning board had granted our variance.
Comment, can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I know that much of the vegetation is on a butter's land, not yours. And I know it's been suggested that, I look at the rear of this site along the access road, there does seem to be an opportunity to put some landscaping in. It would be nice if you could consider doing that.
I don't want to necessarily speak for my client or Mr. Tumula, but I think that's not a problem at all.
Okay, so that would be...
Very much the intention, and I'll let Chris Tumula speak to that specifically.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, Madam Chair, for the record, Chris Tumula from Greenman Peterson. The intent was to, if we were required to by the letter of the law, so to speak, we would be, we would need 18 shade trees along the back or 36 evergreen trees.
Industrial, right.
Exactly, you know, which we felt was excessive. So we wanted to have some dialogue with the board and find out, you know, how many trees, you know, if there's, you know, five or six trees or something of that, you know, nature, we have no issue, you know, kind of running trees along the back of that driveway there. We already do have some low landscaping plantings in that area. And we currently are proposing six new trees on the site and another 10 arborivides around the dumpster enclosure. So we wouldn't have any issue, you know, if it was anywhere from, you know, six to eight additional trees along that back area. I think that would sort of beautify it and meet the spirit and intent of the regulations.
How do folks feel about that? Does that make sense? Yeah, it makes sense to me, I think that. And agreed, you have a variance, understand that, you're not, it's not industrial where you want to shield the building, but I think that would be a nice addition to that area, which would be quite bare otherwise.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, what was the next one? Eight.
So that would be a condition?
Yes.
All right, just, I'm stating it out loud so it shows up in the minutes, and then we pick it up when we write the conditions.
Exactly. And the next one was eight, I'm just looking at... Street sweeping, that's number eight. Again, I would suggest that we include that as a condition, the street as a maintenance item, if you will. That make sense?
Yeah, there's a table that talks about it.
Does that make sense to our applicant?
It does.
Okay. And then what was 11? Bear with me, sorry. We may hear from our butter this evening, but item 11, there is concern raised about making sure that right-of-way is kept free of any obstruction during construction. I know that was a concern, so I think...
There's not going to be any construction, anything done within the right-of-way.
No fencing, anything.
No fencing, it'll be kept as is.
It's, I think, too, they're saying during, throughout construction.
Yep.
So we could make that a condition as well.
It does show up on the drawings with hay bales on the, it looked like it runs down the center of the right-of-way. And additionally, I noticed that there was some grading that was going to happen, some of the grade, the changed grades, the new grades, went into that area, indicating that there was going to be some grading work happening to the road.
That is correct. We are grading in there, we are providing some erosion control along that right-of-way. It is on my applicant's, the applicant's property. The grading is done to match existing grades at the property lines. It's just the inevitable part of any sort of grading and drainage plan. We're not creating any swales or anything that would, you know, prevent, you know, someone from crossing that area down the road.
That seems at odds with the statement that there will be no impact to the right-of-way during construction.
Right, looking at Google Earth, it appears that the roadway, which doesn't fill that whole 20-foot wide space, but it, you know, it takes its path through that 20-foot wide space and is not always over on the adjacent properties, half of that 20-foot right-of-way, that some of those things interrupt that roadway.
Yeah, during construction, there will be impact to that area, but the intent...
My problem is, is that's not what was just stated on the record.
If Attorney Spillane misspoke...
I was mistaken.
I just want to get it, I understand, I just want to get it...
We just want to be clear.
The intent is...
There will be an impact to the right-of-way during construction.
100%, and we stated that at the last hearing, we're stating it now, during construction, there will be impact.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to...
No problem.
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Yeah, it just runs counter to what was said a little earlier about there not being any impact on the right-of-way.
So does the owner of the right-of-way have any concerns about that impact?
Counsel is here for them.
So we'll have to let them speak.
Yeah, let's, can we, should we just continue?
Yeah, let's finish with our comments.
And I know you had mentioned removing the pole, utility pole that's in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we received the Allen Major review letters a little bit later than we had hoped. So in the haste to get plans revised and get back, our lighting consultant, which we had to sub out to a third-party consultant, they provided a lighting plan, we added the plan, submitted everything back with the, and we didn't see that the pole was in that area. We have no issue moving that pole outside of the right-of-way. It wasn't there in the first place, for some reason they added it in that area, but we have no issue moving that out of that area.
So for our purposes, would the conditions show you're removing, your lighting plan's going to show, you're going to revise the lighting plan to show the pole removed?
Absolutely.
Is that the pole that's close to where the drive-through, the ordering windows are?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yes.
Madam Chair, through you to the applicant, I ask a clarifying question. You're going to remove the pole or relocate the pole?
Relocate the pole.
Relocate.
Outside of the right-of-way.
Can you show where it's going to be relocated?
We have to run it by our lighting consultant to make sure that there's no spill over on buttered properties.
Hot spots, all right.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be a change to the plan.
Change plan, okay. And we're still waiting on number 15 from the fire department's sign-off.
So from the fire department's point of view, I'm a little unclear about that. The comments that we had were provide a truck, essentially a truck to a plan for the fire apparatus. We've updated the plans to show that the fire truck can freely get through the entire site, and the other comment was provide an air for deliveries or loading. We've shown, and the plans have always shown, a loading zone right here.
Right.
And it's been there since day one. So maybe the fire chief didn't notice that loading zone, but it's been there from the original plans.
And I know that you said the plan has been sent to the fire department for approval, but you haven't received approval yet. but you haven't received approval yet.
We, we have not received approval by the fire department.
So, we need approval, okay.
But again, we provided a new truck turn plan with the specifications that they provided us. There's zero issue for the truck getting in and out of the site.
Okay.
So, fire truck is smaller than the delivery truck.
Than the delivery truck, right.
Excuse me, the turn radius plan needs to be done with truck one, I believe. Not the smallest truck.
We, we were, we were, if I may, Madam Chair, we were provided the information from the fire department. The template that they provided is, is what we provided on our plan. So, whatever that is, that's what they provided.
I, I just was commenting, we said smaller than delivery truck. They used a large truck when they do the counting.
Yeah, our experience really is that the, anytime we can get the, the delivery vehicles, which typically are WB50, WB60 and such, the larger vehicles, anytime we can get those into the site, I, I have not seen one single plan in the 20-plus years that I've been at the company that a fire truck is not going to work. The fire trucks always work.
I, I accept your statement. We just want the fire chief to agree with it.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, there's, we're having some IT issues. We just need to postpone the hearing until we can get the Zoom back up.
Okay, so, we're going to.
I move, I move, what, we're going to, what?
Take a recess in five minutes.
Okay.
Five-minute recess, move.
Second.
Fall in favor?
I agree.
Steve, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Tim Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Thank you for your forbearance while we.
Rec- recess commenced at?
6:31.
6:31.
Although that's not going to get captured, right, so we need to, Patty won't see that in. I'll make a motion.
Welcome back to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, September 8th. We are coming out of recess after a small technical difficulty.
Are we on, John? I move that we leave recess at 6:41 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Tim Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, back to where we were.
Yes, so, the last issue involves traffic, the traffic rotation. It's a tough, someone who wants to go left and shouldn't go left, mind you, has to cross two lanes of traffic, get in the left lane to make a left. If they're going into the, into the shopping center, correct? And they should know enough not to cross over two lanes.
And where, where, Julie, on that diagram, where are you talking?
If you're exiting onto Cranberry Highway.
Okay, so you come out there and turn left.
Yeah.
We do have no left turn and there is a raised median there to prevent that access.
You have a no-left turn?
Right now, we're showing it as a right-out only.
Correct. So, are you going to have a right-turn-only sign? Okay, that was my question. I missed the sign.
Well, I know how well the one at the.
Yeah, I know.
At the back of Wareham Crossing.
Except there's a raised barrier there, so they really can't.
Is it raised or is it?
It's a scored, scored concrete raised island, so it's about, I think it's three or four inches tall. It's got the rumble strips.
Like the one the bank has.
Yep. And this is, this is consistent with the initial meeting that we had with MassDOT, when we talked about this driveway location. Obviously, you don't want somebody taking that left. That's also the reason that we have the other exit driveway onto Tow Road. Heather Monacup is here from our traffic group. She can discuss anything other traffic-related, but that's the intent of that driveway. It's a, it's a right-out, right-out only.
Okay, because there will be a lot, drive-throughs just generate a lot of traffic.
Well, and, and the concern that I have is, is getting into the property coming from the north.
North, right.
And how, how you even do that? Hi, could you?
Hello, for the record, I'm Heather Monacup with Green and Peterson, and we're also the traffic engineers for the proposed project.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this project is on a state highway, so we did do a full traffic impact access study and it was submitted to, to you guys as well as to MassDOT for review and how we have analyzed the, if you will call it, lefts into the site, right? Because it's a right-in, right-out driveway. They will make a U-turn at the, at the signal to the south and come in. That's how they would have to access the site. And, and our analysis has included those U-turns in it.
And U-turns are allowed at that next light?
Yes.
Yeah, thinking about, yeah. So, hopefully that's how they will proceed.
It's the safest way to do it. And that's why we want to be able to make sure that they can make lefts out at Tow Road at a traffic signal, which makes it a lot easier than trying to make a, a legal left out of the driveway, as you were just saying, over multiple lanes of traffic.
Well, you put a lot of faith in human nature.
People reading the signs.
Plan for everyone.
Pizza places oriented this way.
I mean, it is just going to be more traffic. It's just.
Yeah.
The nature of drive-through. I didn't have anything else.
Sam, do you have any comments?
I'm good.
Mike or Carl?
Move over to the right, the state of both through, not to the mall.
Because, yeah, if you, you have to get over left if you're going to do that.
Right, right. And there's always confusion in the now as it is. They think they're going to make me in the now.
So, either of you guys, Carl and Sam, want to make comments?
I'm just trying to catch up.
Yeah, just trying to get caught up. Here, got it. Anything you want to add? We'll open it up to the public.
No, just.
You're good.
The only thing is, like, coming out that left, coming out of there, the right out, you're heading west. That's the first lane bypasses the mall traffic. And that lane, when people come off the light, two lights back, they're trying to jockey over to get over there. Right now, there's always either a queue problem or a confusion problem. Where do you go? All of a sudden, you've got people coming into your traffic, you're trying to go out. Now, the body shops will love it. There'd be a lot of little fender benders there, I'm sure. You're not going to go fast enough to kill anybody, but.
And the concern about backup, if there's a backup in the line. But I know we talked last time about how the few seconds it takes people to go through.
Right, right.
The queuing, but.
If you travel that road quite often, like I said, if you're heading west, people get in that right-hand lane and they think they own the road.
Yeah, they go very fast, yeah. It's a very, very busy intersection.
It's a tough road. It really is.
Yeah, and it's just getting tougher the more development there is.
So, can I just ask a question? And again, I, I'm not going to be eligible to vote, but I'm just trying to catch up. I, thank you. I have a traffic study question. The traffic impact, did that consider the fact that the car wash has since opened? The Popeyes has opened? Down, downward, there's the, the storage facility? And then, so what kind of downstream development? How far down did the traffic study look for new development that's going on on the highway?
So, we were, in, sorry, just trying to get to my notes here for a moment. So, we did contact the town about background developments and we were told about, so, at the time of our traffic counts, the, obviously the Noria was open. The car wash was fully open. The Popeyes was just finishing construction, not open. So, that was, we, we did that traffic study, so we included that information. And three Tow Road, the contractor road was also mentioned, but that was included in our background development growth. But we did contact the town for what we should have included. So, that is included in our counts, and we counted Tow Road, Kendrick Road, and we have ATR on Tow Road, ATR out on 25.
Yeah, because now that the Popeyes is open, you've got people making left turns coming from the other direction and trying to figure out where to get in there. It's, it's, I have gone in there and you've got people coming out of Noria, coming out of Popeyes, coming out of the car wash, people trying to get in, and that, it's, it's.
The internal intersection there, not, yeah.
Intersection is now interesting at, let's say, lunchtime.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so that, you factored into your study?
Yeah, we factored all that in.
It was just a question.
Yeah, there is a copy of it, and like I said, MassDOT is reviewing it as well.
Thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, if I may, the existing driveways that there today, my understanding is there's no control at those driveways, so they're technically full access, in, out, everything. So, today, as of today, you can take your life into your own hands, so to speak, and take a left out of there. I think what we're doing is we're trying to provide a much safer turning maneuver by having the right in and the right out.
Yeah, that, that restaurant's been closed for a while though, so there hasn't been a lot of traffic going in and out of that site.
Yeah, and so it hasn't been impacted by all the recent development in the neighborhood.
But you, you answered my question. You did what you needed to do, so.
So, do we want to open it up to the public? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Come on up. Make some room for you at the table. If you could state your name and spell it for the record.
Sure. My name is Richard Burke, B-U-R-K-E. I'm an attorney with the firm of Borogard, Burke and Franco in New Bedford, and I represent the Fieldings, Diane Fielding and Stephen Fielding, who are direct abutters to the proposed site, to the, I guess it's the northeast side. I had submitted some things online and I made hard copies. If I may pass them out, if that would be permissible.
I made copies.
I believe so, yeah.
I have copies.
Have a copy for the applicant as well.
Yeah, do you use this axis from Kendrick?
Right, how's it?
Printed part of it.
Does, does the axis from Kendrick come all the way down here? Remember that, there's that.
That piece of the old state, no, that's up here. Thank you.
At the previous meeting, the board had asked for any background information regarding the, the right-of-way. So, what I've, what's included in the packet, and you may have seen it in our online filing, but some additional material was just filed today by, on behalf of my client. So, the first thing is indicating that this right-of-way is actually, was created by the, by the Commonwealth as part of a taking when there was an earlier work done on, on the right-of-way. So, that, the origin of the right-of-way was created by the Commonwealth and it's part of the state highway layout 5560. And the first plan is, is a reference to that state highway. And then I, I included two deeds to the two parcels that Stephen Fielding owns that are, that are adjacent parcels. Those are parcels that are shown on the assessor's map as 1004.B-A and 1004.B. And I, I included the plans that were referenced in those two deeds. Both plans had previously been before your board. And, and one of the plans actually notes and refers to the existing 20-foot-wide right-of-way see state highway layout number 5560, which is the state highway layout diagram that I, I attached as the first attachment. And then there's a photograph, an old photograph. We had mentioned that, that this site had previously been, before it was a restaurant, it had been a gas station. So, this old photograph is showing that gas station on the site. And the concern there, as I mentioned at the last meeting, is whether there would be any underground tanks. I understand the applicant has said they've checked but haven't found any, but there were some there, it is my understanding, at some point. And then the next attachments, we, we submitted those online just today. But, so the first with the yellow showing the contours of the right-of-way. The property line is, is actually between the proposed site and the Fielding and the other property on the other side is in the middle of the right-of-way, which I'm sure the board has noted. But the major concern of my client is that this right-of-way remain open. And what my client had indicated here is the, I believe it's the, the plan for the erosion control. It shows surrounding catch basins with compost filter sock. And you'll see that those are shown, and that's what's shown here encircled in the diagram, as right in front of where the right-of-way is and right adjacent to the right-of-way. Thereby, so that's an example of work that they're proposing that would block the right-of-way. There are some other photographs showing these catch basins and where they are located relative to the right-of-way.
So, there's a, sorry to interrupt, but just quickly, there, on this image, there's a yellow line dashed, and I can't tell if it's drawn on the photograph or on the ground. And was wondering what, what this line is right here. Is that on the ground? Is that spray paint on the ground or is that in the?
You know, I didn't notice that, and I see that in the picture. I, I'm not sure if that is on the ground or not. It, it looks like it's demarcating above the middle of the page section of the right-of-way. But the main purpose of the photograph is to show the location of the catch basins, which are, which are shown on the engineering drawings.
That actually looks like it might be the, the northerly side of the right-of-way on the applicant's side of the property line.
Looking at the. Looking at that.
Yeah.
So, the next couple of pictures are showing the catch basins. And then the remaining documents are just excerpts from your consulting engineer's analysis. Some portions that are, that are highlighted, including the, the importance of maintaining the right-of-way being open. There's also a reference on the second to last page of the current lighting plan depicting light levels trespassing onto adjacent properties. That's also a concern, that any new lighting be directed away from a butter's property, including my client's property. And then the last page, which I think is important for the board to note, it really hasn't been addressed, is that, but your consulting engineer is raising the issue of the landscaping setback, which is required by zoning bylaws, section 1042. And there, there was an application for a variance that was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, but it is my understanding that the only variance that was requested and discussed and granted at the hearing was on the bank side, on the other side of the property, where there was, there was a variance granted from the landscaping requirement. They had obtained easements from the bank and so forth. On the Fielding side, on the northeast side, if you look at the zoning board recorded hearing, you will see at the very end of the hearing, one of the zoning board members clarified that there was no request for a variance on the Fielding side from the landscaping waiver. And so, there, there, that has not been addressed at all. My understanding is there was no variance granted for that, and, and the zoning board member clarified that at the end of the hearing. The zoning board variance is somewhat unclear. It really only refers to a variance for a restaurant with drive-through. It doesn't even say anything more specific in the, in the variance itself. But it is important to my clients that their rights to that landscaping barrier be protected, which means that really, any landscaping should be set back about 20 feet from the, from the property line, which is the middle of the right-of-way. So, they can't count the, the 10 feet on their side of the right-of-way, which is their property but subject to the right-of-way. They can't put landscaping there. The landscaping has to be another 10-foot setback.
Has to start at the inboard edge of the right-of-way.
That's right. And, and then 10 feet back from there should be a landscaping buffer without any variance granted. We would like to request that there be a line of arborvitaries that 20 feet back from the center line or the property line of the right-of-way.
That would do. That would do.
And that, you know, there's simply no room for that proposed on what they're proposing here.
Not with the current layout.
20-foot wide, puts them right near that road.
So just to summarize, this right-of-way is an essential access. It was created by the state to provide access to these properties. It should not be blocked in any way, even temporarily during construction. A butter should not be, have to have their access blocked so that another development, a new development can proceed. And they are showing, even on their diagrams, that they're submitting to you various blockages of that, whether it's the light pole that was discussed earlier, or this compost filter sock. And that should not be permitted. We do request that the landscaping buffer bylaw be honored and that there be landscaping setback 20 feet from the property line with ideally a row of arbivites. We have some concern that, at the last meeting, I believe there was some discussion about the fire chief and safe access and a fire lane. There, I don't believe there's any fire lane that's shown here. We're concerned about drainage. There was talk even earlier tonight about that they would, they would do work in the, inside the right-of-way, apparently to perhaps raise elevations within the right-of-way. Right now, the drainage does not pitch into the right-of-way and toward the Fielding property to the northeast. We ask that the board make sure that any drainage is not impacting our property and that any drainage is pitched away from the right-of-way and that they not be permitted. I tried to look at the elevations that were on the existing plans, and they're, they seem to be fairly close, but they seem to also be talking tonight about changing those elevations by raising the elevations in the right-of-way, which would likely change the drainage flow. I mentioned the lighting. We ask that any lighting be directed away. We ask that if the board does permit this project, that there be a temporary construction fence at least eight feet high. If they're going to demolish this old restaurant building that's there, we don't know, it may contain asbestos, but certainly there'll be insulation, there'll be debris, there'll be nails, and that shouldn't be blowing onto or falling into the right-of-way. I mentioned the underground tanks. Clearly, this was, a long time ago, a gas station. To simply say, we don't know, or we haven't found any underground tanks yet, is a concern. And just to close, I would ask that the board protect, and there is no clear evidence of any variance to grant a waiver of the landscaping requirement along that side of the property. And absent that, this board should require full compliance with the bylaw, which these plans do not do.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, through you to the town planner. So the only thing that, and I appreciate the applicant's, or not the applicant, the lawyer, the Fielding's lawyers comments, I'm acknowledging that, I'm trying to. So the only thing that we have to go on, and the only thing anyone 20 years from now will have to go on, is that poorly written decision. So I accept the statement that there was a comment made, excuse me, I shouldn't have said poorly written decision. The decision as it was written, which does not address the issue of landscaping on the Fielding site. I shouldn't have said poorly, that was inappropriate. How do we deal with that? I accept, I'm asking the town planner, not you. So can we go back? Can the planning, excuse me, can the zoning board amend their decision to clarify, or is it a done deal?
So, no, it's a good question. I was reviewing the meeting minutes from that meeting. Mr. Burke is correct, there's no discussion about a variance to the landscaping on that side of the property.
But the way it's worded, it just says there's a landscaping variance.
Yeah, so they, and a lot of the discussion pertained to the landscaping on the, I'll just say the bank side.
The bank side.
I'm not going to pull out my compass for this one. So they could, they could go back to the zoning board to amend the proposal, right?
Who, that would be the applicant.
The applicant. The applicant, they could. They could apply for a new variance. But, yeah, those are the options.
So right now, as it stands, the variance says there is a variance for landscaping.
And how, how much does it define that?
It doesn't.
Doesn't, yeah, I looked at it, too.
How long ago was that decision made?
May?
Oh, so it's too late for an appeal?
Correct. I want to say it was issued maybe early June. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we have to accept the zoning variance as written. What latitude do we have to go to the minutes or the video to clarify our interpretation of that variance?
Probably very little.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hence, the importance of writing really good decisions, which we have been, as our board has been dealing with for some time now.
It's tough, yeah.
So, but this is a site plan review, and within that, we have a lot of latitude.
What does our applicant say? How can we work on this?
So I, respectfully, I would take the position that our zoning board variance application requested relief on both sides of the property. Whether or not there was a discussion at the hearing, or there was questions asked, I don't think is material. They voted to grant us the variance for the landscaping setback. Our site plan showed zero feet on the Fielding side, zero feet on the bank side. I mean, if they don't ask questions, and it's clear from the application what we're asking for, I don't have anything, I mean, we can't ask for a new variance, we've already asked for it. My position is that it was granted.
Thank you. However, with site plan review, we have a lot of discretion. We could, we could, in our site, I'm not saying we're going to do this, this is part of deliberation, we could put the landscape buffer wherever we wanted it. We have to try and balance everybody's needs. Madam Chair, through you back to the applicant. Is that okay? Notwithstanding your opinion that you have a variance, and I think probably on the point of the law, you're correct, what options do you have to offer to address the concern of the abutter?
Well, given the significant landscaping that is already within, along their side of the right-of-way, I think.
You're talking about on their property?
Correct.
Their landscaping.
Correct. But the intent of a landscape buffer is to shield one property from another when there's development.
But you can't control what they do with their property?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so you're saying you're not able to really offer any accommodation?
I'm not going to speak to what can be done or not done. I'll let the engineer and the applicant address it if it's doable, but even though, yes, we need to have landscaping, a landscaping buffer, but the intent of that zoning bylaw is met. And you're right, we can't control what they do to their property, but they can. And it's been there for, I don't know, looks like a very, very long time. So to intentionally then clear it, so that they can claim that they don't have a buffer, seems disingenuous to me.
So your answer is you don't really see any easy path to accommodate at the moment?
What's that?
That was just my question.
Not with the right-of-way there. Unfortunately, because of the narrow, you know, the way the property narrows in the middle, you know, to ask that we then come out 10 feet on the other side of the right-of-way, just it practically makes the project unfeasible.
They've answered my question.
Thank you for asking that question. Yes.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Burke.
Shall I get out of Mr. Burke's way?
No, it's going to be a quick question, as long as he can just get to the microphone. Did your applicant attend the zoning board hearing? All right, not your applicant, your client.
I attended on their behalf, and at least one of my, one of the family members was.
And was this question raised at that time about that variance on that side?
It was explicitly discussed by the zoning board to the applicant, if you look at the video, it's online.
I don't question that.
The zoning, when they're discussing the landscaping setbacks, they're clarifying that there is, the only one that was asked for was on the bank side, that they were not being asked for, nor were they granting on the Fielding side. And then they proceeded.
Thank you, you answered my question. Unfortunately, my opinion is your recourse was to appeal that decision at the time it was made.
Well, they have to have a variance granted. If there isn't a variance granted, then they don't have it.
They have a variance that was granted.
It has to be specific and clear what it's being granted.
I agree with your argument, however, we have to deal with the decision as it was written and filed with the land court, and.
And the only thing that's, there isn't any mention in the decision for any variance or any landscaping setback. I don't look at all.
If you listen, if you listen to the questioning that I'm working through, I'm acknowledging your statement.
I mean, I have a copy of the variance here.
I read, I read the variance. I read the variance. I got your email, I read the variance.
As did I, yes.
And the problem is, I asked a series of questions that are going to, I don't get the vote, so it doesn't matter. But it seems to me like there's a pickle. I read the variance, you know, you could give it to anybody.
Did you submit it as part of the record?
You did, you did, but you could submit it again.
If you would permit.
Okay, I've asked my questions, we have the input, you guys have to deliberate based on.
I think if you look at that decision, when I was reading it before I came in today, it doesn't say anything about landscaping, variances anywhere, I don't believe.
You guys are going to have to decide whether they have a variance or not, and what the scope of it is. But per the advice, I think both of the applicant's counsel and from town planner is, this is what we have to work with. I appreciate your concern and your point.
I think that the decision.
The only thing that we could add to our analysis is, that's the decision, what was asked for in the application.
And we're hearing.
And you said both sides, excuse me, through you to the applicant's attorney, the application said both sides in your application.
I have, I do have a copy of my memorandum, if you want to look at it. It does discuss, you know, the east side of the property and the north side, where the, where the bank is.
Goes back to things we've, we have to write, we, we can't take other boards, but we have to write very clear decisions, so we avoid these kinds of future concerns.
So the decision reflected, again, to the chair, to our other members for discussion, it reflected arguably what was asked for in the application.
Regardless of what they said in the discussion.
Right.
Which is, again, why I've argued for very detailed minutes, which I keep getting shot down on.
I read it a while ago, so.
Yeah, it's not clear.
No.
Well, it, the chain of, the chain appears to be pretty clear. The application said east and west, or directionally whichever. The variance said, you got a variance for what you asked for, whatever that was. That's unfortunate.
My opinion.
Huh? Well, no, no, I'm not deliberating now, I'm just trying to deal with the point that was, work through it. All right, well, we haven't decided anything yet.
Madam Chair, could I just add one comment along the line of Carl's train of thought? The application was focused on the bank and the easement side of things, as the applicant is suggesting, but it didn't make any mention of the rest of the landscape buffer around the property. So I just want to make sure, as you start deliberations on this, that you're not losing sight of that there is additional landscape buffer around the property that is not landscaped presently on the current application. And you should maybe consider that the variance was, if in fact, we agree that the variance was granted, it was specifically requested against the bank and the right-of-way, it made no mention of the rest of the property. And then in addition to that, along the right-of-way, we tried to make mention of this in the report to the board, with the exception of the connector piece of roadway, which falls directly on the line of the easement, there, the right-of-way, excuse me, there is green space that landscaping could be provided that meets, better meets the intent of what the landscape buffer under the zoning bylaws would do. And I just draw the board's attention to that for consideration as well.
So green space.
Looking at the plan that's directly across me, as you're coming in off of Cranberry Highway, you can see the darkened line at an up north, northerly angle, there's a lawn, thank you, down, right in there. You can see that there's depth between the back of their curb from the parking lot and the limit of the right-of-way in there.
Closer to Route 28.
Yes, closer to Route 28. And as you continue northerly towards the back of the site, the connector roadway right, down a little bit, down, right in there, clearly, they're right on the right-of-way. And if we accept the premise that you can't plant within it, because I agree with the attorney, you would be blocking access to the right-of-way. But then, once you get beyond that pinch point, there's additional land area outside of the right-of-way where plantings could be accommodated, in our opinion, and we're just noting it for the board's consideration. And that remains true, the remainder of the property, as you go out to Toe Road as well, even though it's a very much secondary driveway, that landscape buffer bylaw language does exist around the entire perimeter of the property, and it's not reflected here in any material way with additional plantings.
What's the width of the land up toward the access to the pond?
Question?
Up there? What's the width of the space from the right-of-way to the road, to the asphalt?
It's approximately, at its widest point, it's almost 10 feet. So basically, at this point here, this is a little gravel access point to the basin. So here's your 10-foot setback, here's the additional total 20-foot setback. So that, right about there is about, you know, nine or 10 feet. It does taper down, down to the zero.
I'm going to ask one more question, I'll probably ask a thousand more questions, but Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Burke again. I'm not expecting an answer today, I'm making a request. Given that this area has been, going all the way back to your picture of the gas station, not buffered at all, what is it your client is trying to accomplish, and what would be their goal in this buffer? And you don't have to answer right now, if you want to talk to them.
I suppose I should, but I think I can answer that. They see if it.
Can you, can you hear him, John? Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Richard Burke, I'm here representing the fieldings, the abutters to the northeast. Their concern is that there's a big difference between that restaurant that was there for many years and has been closed for many years, and a Taco Bell fast food place that's going to be going in. The nature of the businesses is completely different, and the amount of traffic, et cetera, the amount of lights, the volume of everything, that's, that's the concern.
Okay, we agree they can't abridge your client's rights to use the right of way. So right now, we're discussing the buffer. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
So I spoke to my client, we will, if the board so chooses, allow us, we'll provide some additional trees in that area where we can, up to the extent of the right of way.
Just make sure the green light is on. State your name also, so Patty knows who's speaking.
Again, Chris Tumula from GPI. So in this area, in this area here, we can add some additional trees, we are already showing two trees here, we could possibly add a third tree there. We're doing our best to try to work with the, with the abutter. A lot of the relevant concern with regards to the erosion control, those items are put in to protect their property during construction. If they're saying that they don't want silt fence there for whatever reason, we'll remove the silt fence. The erosion control that was shown along the catch basins, that is to protect the catch basins. We did basically sort of a belt and suspend, a belt and suspendance approach where we have the inlet, the catch basin inlets, which are those dandy bags or whatever type use, so those are inserts in the catch basins. Those catch bases are then surrounded by the silt sock. We could just simply remove the silt sock, then you could just traverse over the catch basin as you would today, it's just going to have an additional protection within that catch basin.
Yeah, you're not, you're not just protecting the abutters, you're protecting the town and the roadways, and so the silt fencing is an important feature for construction that we would have to think about. I appreciate that we have to protect the fieldings, but we need to protect Cranberry Highway from runoff.
We would have no, you know, there's no issue providing, you know, the erosion control fence along the front, we have no issue providing these silt socks or silt catch basin inlets within the basin themselves, obviously we want to make sure we're.
All things we're going to have to think through.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other question, while we're on the roadway, is, is the grading that was planned for.
We have a full stormwater management report, we have a design point, Cranberry Highway, this is a design point, the abutter, this is a design point to the north, all the design points, 210, how do you, design storms, there's either zero increase or reduction at the peak rate of runoff, it was reviewed by your peer review consultant, there should be no impact to the abutter or the surrounding systems.
And the work that would be done, the grading work that would be done in, in the roadway could be revised so that it's not.
There's no, I'm not, I'm not sure what the comment was, but there's no change in the grading from the original plan to the roadway from what.
Because there was, there were some grade lines that were in the roadway showing, but.
The, the grading that's in the right of way are just, it's within a grassed area, it's not the road itself, we're not touching the roadway itself, we're, we're matching the existing pavement and curb lines that's in the road with our new driveway. All the minor grading that's outside of that, that's within the right of way, it's just within grassed area that's there today.
So the line 49 and line, they're both line 49, one all the way up at the upper end, and one right adjacent to where the two roadways sort of, where the road, the paved area abuts the. So the grades that I was concerned about were here, and here, and here, and those are new grades.
Yep. And those are all taken into account with our stormwater management report, and we have no increase in rate of runoff on entire property line, even with those, those grading changes and everything.
So we'll get Mr. Cordero to confirm that he agrees with your calculation.
So through the chair, I do agree with his assertion in terms of the stormwater calculations, we did vet those. Our opinion is, we're looking at the grading that is suggested within the right of way is fairly minimal, and our interpretation of the easement is they need to maintain access for the fieldings through here. And that limited grading that they're doing does not prohibit access, it cleans up the lawn, it enhances the area, such that when construction is ongoing, though, the applicant should bear the responsibility, if, if the board issues a permit, of coordinating with the fieldings on making, making sure that if there ever needs to be a machine in there to do any work, that they are not blocking the access even for this de minimis grading that they're showing. That's our opinion.
And we have no issue with that, Madam Chair, we'd like to be good neighbors, my client would like to be good neighbors, we will not restrict access in the event it's needed.
Yeah, okay.
So, so Madam Chair, we could condition it to make sure there's notice given to the fieldings if, when events are going to happen, and some negotiation.
Absolutely.
That's a condition.
We just need to be very clear in our conditions, as we've noticed earlier this evening.
Yes.
Thank you, I think we've discussed Mr. Burke's comments, we have to think about them and act on them, but we have another attorney to speak with us, so.
Very briefly, my name is Robert Perry, P E R R Y. I'm a chairman of management here in Wareham.
Do you spread it to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
In my opinion, absolutely, because this right of way thing is strictly a matter of opinion. I'm representing Mr. Siafoni, he's the property owner here. I've been familiar with this right of way since I came before this honorable board, Mike, I might even have been there, he'd be the only guy, 30 years ago or more, to have you approve Phillips Park, tow road, that whole business. And this right of way had a lot to do with that, too. So I had to get into it at that time, and I've been into it over and over again. We're talking about a right of way that in my opinion doesn't exist at all. And I have to suspect that Mr. Fielding knows that, and I'm talking about Stephen. Diane's a great person, Stephen's deceased father, Diane's widow, widower, great guy. I dealt with him, I had nothing but the greatest respect for him. I am a little surprised at Stephen and his hypocrisy and his arrogance, in that, look at the mess he's got.
Could we, could we keep the?
Look at the mess they have on that property, okay? If Mr. Fielding felt there was really a right of way, he wouldn't have come to the end of his property and put up the great big fence that he's put there, which blocks anyone else who, should he have rights, would have similar rights. But they now can't get on that right of way. But nobody else wants to because they, they know what the situation is. If I may approach.
That's your call.
Sure.
I brought with me the actual language with the so-called right of way. That right of way, I will lay it back.
You want this back? Excuse me, you're going to take these back?
No, you have.
Oh, I thought you said I want these back, but.
No, that's why I said I better get back to the microphone so you can hear me.
Okay.
No, not at all, those copies are yours, and girls. Anyway, the right of way was established by Commonwealth, my old friend, Mr. Burke, is correct on that, and it was established because Route 25 was a limited access highway. And various people with properties on the other side, the east side of 25, not the west side, that we're talking about, had their access eliminated. As a result, under chapter 81, as amended by the Acts of 1949, they developed a right of way for people who had to get over the highway. And they brought them around, and they brought them across, I guess these are, you know, the ones with the state, please go across, they bring their vehicles, and it says, you know, no access, don't turn here. That's what this was all about. It wasn't intended to give an access to anybody on the east side who could access their highway. It didn't go to Rodriguez, who is the forerunner on the Siafoni property and on the Phillips Park property, didn't go to anybody unless they were on the other side and couldn't get to their property. The top page 29 gives you the excuse for the variance. Now, the properties are on the last couple of pages we're dealing with, they're IR 13, 14, and 15. And they name all the parties. I guess it's time we do something about this, I haven't wanted to, because I want to get into court or something like this, but everybody's respecting the so-called right of way. Mr. Siafoni has respected it. You asked a question, I'm not going to answer, but I know why Stephen Fielding is, is here. And I know why he didn't object to any of the other projects within 300 feet of his, his property. I'm actually consider what I gave you, in the right of way, I can't believe somebody can object to maybe a very temporary obstruction in the right of way, which they'll be working and let go around it. When they blocked off any other access to the right of way by putting up this big lock gate, that's, that's unbelievable. I just ask you to consider what I've said here, when, when you're ultimately working toward a decision on this project. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
You got it? That's what we're looking for. So you got input, that's what you're looking for.
That's what I got.
Looking for any other citizens' comment?
Yeah, do we have any other citizens who wish to comment? Online? Jim, you need to unmute.
Okay, I'm not seeing the microphone signal here.
Now we hear you.
Okay, good, Jim Manese, I'm on Cranberry Highway. I'm not in favor or against the project, my concern is the safety on the highway, egress and entrance, people who are going south, coming across the northbound lanes, heading into the proposed facility, and people coming out, going across, heading south, going across another lane, heading south. I would like to know what the proponent would like to do, beyond, I think he said, rumble strips, a raised island with long horns going north and south so that people can't go across there, or as I suggested, I guess a month ago, knock down strips, or we already have that issue going into the Aldi Plaza, where they're not supposed to enter because the island's so small. So I'd like to know what they would like to do, and not say, well, the highway department or, that's what I'd like to know.
Through you, of course, Madam Chair.
Yes. So, like we said before, the project is in, oh, sorry, for, for the record, Heather Monica with GPI, the project is in review with MassDOT. I, I can't answer why there is not a raised median out there today. I also can't answer why there is a break in the painted island, which looks like it gives access to this right of way that we're talking about today. So if MassDOT requires that we put up a median, then we're going to have to put up a median, but if they don't, for some reason that is beyond our control, we, you know, we don't plan on putting up a median.
You couldn't, right?
We could not.
You cannot.
We need MassDOT's permission to do that, yes.
Needs to be a group effort.
Correct, it's their, it's their right of way, and that's, that's, they're reviewing the plans, we, we wanted to talk to them preliminarily about access, they said the right in, right out looks good, make your submission, and they wanted to hear how the first planning board went, how the response to comments went, that's all been submitted to MassDOT for review, and we're waiting on their comments, so there's not much more we can do there.
So if I might ask, did you say there is concern about cross-traffic on the highways in your reports to MassDOT? Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So we are proposing a right in, right out, so I think that was discussed earlier, we, we are proposing right in, right out, so there will be no lefts out on Route 24 or lefts in. To make a left out, you'd have to use tow road, and to make a left in, you'd have to make a U-turn at the light and come in and make a right in.
Well, you have a raised island barrier there, and not just rumble strips.
Oh, it's, it's, yeah.
On your entrance.
Correct, but it's, it'll be signed as a right in, right out.
So it'll be six inches high, or?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's like three or four inches, I believe.
Again, my concern is only the safety, traffic safety. Not for or against the project, I think to address that, it's not getting better on that section of the highway, and the sooner we start to address it, the better off we'll be for public safety. Thank you, for this opportunity.
I think it's precisely with that concern in mind that we're discussing this as much as we are.
And struggling with it, yeah.
And struggling with it, yes.
That's right, yeah.
So do we have further comments from anybody?
Madam Chair, are we waiting for any more input? Do we have all the reports? Have we heard from the fire department?
We're waiting on the fire.
Yeah, fire department, and we don't have any concom.
So again.
The fire department, though, I believe you're only waiting on one truck turn plan that was submitted, that has been submitted to you guys? No, I understand, but it's not, it's just that one, one piece of information, not, they did review everything, and then they just asked for that.
Or to help sewer, they've all either not commented or have provided their input, right?
Correct.
And we have Mr. Cordero's report.
And our response to that.
And your response. So the only thing.
Waiting on fire.
And just to clarify, this is a site plan review, which we cannot approve or deny, we can only condition.
Condition.
Correct.
We're waiting for the fire department.
But we are waiting for the fire department.
And we need to.
Which, similar to the last applicant, if we close the public hearing and there's an issue.
Yeah.
If it helps, my client would be willing to take that risk and reapply if needed.
That's up to the chair.
There's a.
Is there a time constraint?
There is a time constraint with construction for this site. We are getting into, you know, potentially winter months now, construction can occur, but asphalt, those types of things really need to be done within the next 45 days or so. 60 days.
Thanksgiving.
And Madam Chair, if I may, we started this process with the town in February, it took us two or three months just to get on the ZBA agenda, and then we've submitted to the planning board in May, and we just got on the planning board July of last, so July this year. It is imperative that our client be able to move forward with the project, and with the unforeseen delays, you know, it's, there's a, there's a very serious time crunch.
Understood. Same time, we need to be able to do our review as thoroughly as we can.
In all departments to finish their review.
Yes, correct. So is there any interest in, of the board, moving this, well, closing the public hearing? With pending, pending the fire departments?
So just, while we're doing discussion, just to clarify, even if we close the public hearing, we have 60 days to write our decision. So that doesn't really.
Doesn't really help.
Help, I mean, if we took the entire 60 days to write the decision.
Right, the conditions.
Well, yeah, the conditions, it's not a decision, it's the conditions of approval. Okay, just a comment.
So.
If you took the 60 days, they're out of business. They're not going to be in construction until April.
Yep.
And then maybe open up July weekend. That's what we're talking about. And it's not their fault. Again, but, you know...
It's not anybody's fault.
I agree, Carl.
It's a process, and people who do...
It's the process.
Building and construction plans know about these timing, and it's not a surprise.
I agree.
And little towns have to work through the process.
Yep.
So, the question before us is whether we close the hearing for you with that risk of the fire department coming back with substantive changes expected, which would mean that we'd have to reopen the whole process.
Just, I was pretty emphatic the rest time. Let me add a clarification. The first determination would be, is it a major or minor change? And if it's a minor change...
It's a process that would have to be gone through.
But it wouldn't necessarily require a full public hearing.
Not necessarily. If it was a major change, it would.
Yes. And as long as the applicant understands that risk...
Right.
I still think it's not a good way to do business.
Well, I would say that, given the nature of the traffic route through this site with a fire truck, I guess, I mean...
Is the... And this is the access the fire truck would have to take to get to the Fielding property as well, though, right?
Yes.
But if that 20-foot right-of-way remains open...
Madam Chair, if I may, so the plan that's being presented right now is the fire truck turn plan. You can see in the upper right, it even says the Wareham ladder truck. You can see that they have a clear path movement throughout the entire site. We have no issue that the fire department is going to be able to sign off on this.
Understood. I mean, I'm saying what you just said. But wanting the board to decide if, you know... Not the board to decide. It's a group decision of whether we close the public hearing. But you're comfortable with taking that risk, and so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And close it with pending the fire department's review.
Well, that would be a condition that you'd have to write on your decision.
And other conditions that we've discussed.
Oh, yeah. There will be... Yeah, the conditions need to be written.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mike Baffetis, I see with a little doubt in my mind because the last one, like I said, I'm like, "Carl, I don't like closing public hearings." I'm going to stop pending, no matter what the conditions are.
I'm going to abstain because I'm ineligible.
And the chair votes aye. So, public hearing is closed, pending review of the fire department, and we will put our decisions together... Our decision together or our...
Conditions.
Our conditions together.
We still need to take a vote. You don't have to take a vote.
Right. We can do that once we've got the conditions written.
Correct.
So...
Will the decision... Will the draft decision be provided to us for feedback? Is that...
That's the plan.
The conditions, yes.
Yep.
Madam Chair, to reflect on the applicant, we're trying... We have been trying to implement a new process, and I'll say this, and I believe we're going to say, that findings of fact and conditions, we solicit input from both the public and the applicant. And there is a form, MAT, that people... I wrote that people thought was onerous, but that was actually a word that was used. I didn't think so, but we are...
It's an amendment.
If you want to see what I suggested, Josh can certainly let you know. Mr. Manese, if you want to submit your input, Mr. Burke, if you want to submit for your applicant, findings of fact and conditions, we certainly, I think... We're encouraging applicant and citizen participation in that process. But we will then ultimately...
Be the arbiters.
...arbiters and take responsibility for the decision. But we certainly appreciate your... Is that a fair...
Yes. And I will reiterate that this is site plan review, and so what we have at our discretion is conditions, not an approval or denial. So, bear that in mind. So, do we want to set a date that we will have the...
Not the next week.
We're not continuing because it's not... The public hearing is closed.
What's your October 6th agenda look like?
So, September 22nd is looking quite full.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got three new public hearings.
October 6th?
October 6th, this is the next open meeting.
So, if we're going to get that done, your input sooner rather than later, because we have to sit down and write the darn thing.
Do you want our input before the decision is written, or...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. I've got you.
We're asking for your input to prepare the...
So that we can roll what your...
Findings of fact and...
Yeah.
And your suggestions for conditions.
Sure.
Based on some of what we talked about tonight.
Yep.
And will Mr. Farady be sending that to us, or do we need to reach out? How's that work?
Well, you could send him... If you want the format that I wrote, you can get it from Josh. I think it's actually even on the website, but somewhere.
The format is as to what format you put your thoughts together in so that we can digest it a little bit more readily.
It was an aid so that we didn't... We've often got lots of material that is very difficult to sift through. We were trying to get more organized. This bylaw, this condition, this bylaw, this condition.
Makes sense.
Okay, so, the sooner you can get...
You said October 6th or...
The sooner you can get material to us, the better, because we're going to try and have conditions written so that everybody can see them prior to the meeting on 10/6.
Okay.
So, the sooner the better. We are a volunteer board, and we've got a condition... Set of conditions to write, so...
You will have them this week.
And we would like them to be to you so that you can look them over.
And we welcome input from Mr. Cordeira as well, who's our advisor. And of course, we get it.
And Attorney Burke.
Yeah, I mentioned Attorney Burke.
As well as the whole team here.
Mr. Perry, if you guys want to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a new public hearing, project number 11-25. And let me open Scribbles. Need this to open the public hearing? Yep, need it. So, notice of public hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 8, 2025, at 6:00 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. To consider petition number 11-25 for site plan review from the requirements of Article 15, Section 1552 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Scribbles Learning Center LLC, care of William H. Lockwood Architects of PO Box 95, Onset, Massachusetts, 02558, proposing interior renovations of the existing building for use as a child daycare center with construction of an onsite fencing and a shed located at 396 Onset Avenue, Wareham, Massachusetts, Assessors Map, 17 Lot 1001 in the CS zoning district.
I move that we open the public hearing as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Mike Baffetis, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, before we open, I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
I have done business with Mr. Lockwood. It was seven or eight years ago. I do not believe that it represents a conflict of interest, but if he feels differently, it's open.
I think we settled our business at that time in an amicable basis, and I have no problem with your...
I just wanted to be on it. We did do business. It's been quite a while, but...
I'm sorry to hear about passing it away.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I think that's... Josh, we don't need to do anything other than be saying that on the record. Thank you.
Yep, here I'll sit.
For the record, I am Bill Lockwood of Lockwood Architects. Previously stated, that's L-L-C-K-W-O-O-D for the Scribner.
Thank you.
And with me today are Melissa and Mark Cordeira, C-O-R-D-E-I-R-A. Is that Mark with a C, right?
Yes.
And they are the owners of Scribbles Daycare LLC. We have green cards. Will they be collected?
Thank you.
We have a couple of returns. Do you want them, too?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So, I'm going to give you the floor.
Okay.
To present the project.
All right. So, the site of the project is 396 Onset Avenue, which is everybody should be familiar with. It has been a building there for some... Since, I think, '81 or '82. Originally built as Mayflower Bank Building, then subsequently for Citizens Trust. When they vacated, it was bought by a developer, and they are... The developer is proposing to lease to these people who would like to open a daycare center. It's a startup business for them. They will be accommodating a staff of about eight and accommodating, I believe, let's see here... Don't want to misquote myself.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-eight students, so, for a total population of... At the building of 46 people, 38 of whom don't drive. We hope.
Well, presumably, they've got parents or guardians who do. So, anyway, keep them...
Presumably, they've got bigger people doing that for them.
Yes.
And they will be... And dropping off... So, the site is fully developed and has been well-maintained over the years. The landscaping is intact, as it's stated in the petition. Really, our only thing that we're doing... The reason we are here, in fact, is because it's a change of use. It's a change of use from business as a bank to education as a daycare center. The parking toll or the number of parking spaces that we will be required to have is 18, one for each staff member plus one for each of 25% of 38 students, for a total of 18 spaces. And right now, there are 25 provided on-site, and we're proposing no changes to the parking.
Madam Chair, through you to the applicant, Mr. Lockwood. I thought I read Mr... I could have been... I thought his denial said it was denied on parking, but did I misread his denial? Is it in... Is the denial letter...
His denial was included in there.
I thought it said...
To the materials.
I read it quickly when it came in, but I thought he denied it because of parking. Your applicant... Your statement makes much more sense than what I... Where is his letter?
Oh, I... Well, yes. Yes and no. And I know what you're referring to now. And it is if it requires... There is a... If the new use would require 10 spaces, then a site plan review is required.
Whether it's...
Whether it's existing or not.
I always read it as new. So, that was a misreading on my part. Thank you.
And it was, you know, kind of an initial whoops on our part that we've... You know, we got enough parking, you know? Why would we need a site plan review?
That's exactly why I asked the question. I misread.
But then, a careful reading of the zoning suggested that, oh, yeah, we're supposed to be here. Sorry. But so, here we are.
Thank you. That was the clarification I needed.
So, as I stated, the... We're going to be fencing in the backyard because we're required to have a play area of 75 square feet per kid, and we don't want them running into that fairly busy intersection. The good news of fencing that off is that we will be cutting off the drive-through, which was for the bank for banking purposes, but since the... For Citizens has left, it's become a shortcut from Great Neck Road to Onset Avenue.
Police going to park.
What?
Where's the police going to park?
They can park there.
Police have been known to habitat the parking lot as well.
That's fine. Extra security. They can stay there. Extra security.
But we would be then forcing traffic back into the actual traffic.
Where it's supposed to be.
Obviously, you're all aware that there is a proposals... There are proposals for reconstruction of that intersection, which we, of course, have no... Nothing to say about, really. It's going to happen or not happen, but what we can say is that our minor trap impact of dropping off and picking up is not going to have any more of an impact on the traffic through that intersection than the previous occupants may have had.
Ages of the kids at the school?
What's that?
Ages of the kids at the daycare?
Madam Chair, may I? Melissa Cordeira, four weeks to five years old. So, infant, toddler, and preschool.
So, these are all kids that would be accompanied into the building?
Correct.
No drop-off, like at a school?
Correct. Not a shoot, no. They would be dropped off and walked in for security reasons.
And do any... And what are the hours?
They'll be 7:30 to 5:30.
Okay. So, you don't... And is there any part of it an after-school program?
No.
The five-year-olds? Okay, so they're basically there all day?
Yes.
And I'm looking at the... Sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
Madam Chair. On the parking, it looks like many of the parking spaces do have the existing concrete walk, which has a mother of three, grandmother of two, two-year-olds, important. It looks like there are a few spaces, though, that don't have a walkway, but it looks like they would walk along the proposed fence.
Are you referring to the three-by-the-street?
There's three-by-the-street, and then there's seven.
About 10. I would say that those are basically the employee parking.
Okay.
Right.
And would that... Is that really what you would direct them, that that is...
Oh, absolutely.
To make sure that the others are... Yeah, they'll be in the front, right in the front where there's the four, and then on the side where there is walkway access that will have signage that says parent drop-off only.
And so, yes. And so, is drop-off only through the building, not...
Through that front door.
There isn't a gate through the recreation area?
There will be a gate for fire escape, but the main entrance is the in-and-out.
Okay, but the in-and-out, there's only one entrance versus traffic in there going.
Correct.
Okay. And other question is, just interested, why aren't you removing the overhang? And, other question is, just interested, why aren't you removing the overhang? Isn't that part of the?
Um, for when it's snowing, raining, it's important for kids to get outside every day.
Yeah.
So, I'm a former kindergarten teacher for twenty years, so.
My daughter's a kindergarten teacher, so that's why I'm asking.
I know, yeah, yeah, that's, that's where I'm going, so, it's very important.
I think it would be good to have the canopy in place, 'cause you've got a shady area.
And just shade, yeah, yeah.
And a not-shady area. I have a question about whether the asphalt is gonna be, um, taken up in that area and some other surface put down to the play area.
Correct, I've just had this conversation with the state and with my consultant, um, you can take that all up, or you can put down, um,
Something on top.
environmentally engineered mulch, but my plan, right now, is to put, um, it's a plush turf, so it's one point two-five to one point five, um, thickness, so that's what I've kind of decided on, because, um, and it has to be lag bolted down, and.
Yeah.
Alright, that would be on top of the asphalt?
Correct.
So, this would still be impervious ground cover?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that the, the turf, uh, yeah, sorry, um, yeah, I forgot how the turf works, I've worked on a daycare center, with the turf everywhere, and.
Yeah, I've been struggling with that decision, and through the work of a consultant, we've decided that turf is probably the, the best way to go.
Yeah.
Um, with that asphalt being underneath.
The drainage being the, the big question of how you, if it's impervious underneath it, but that's a technical question.
Correct.
Um, the other question I had was about those proposed planters, I see you've got bollards on one side, especially if there's asphalt leading up to it, um, and, and the, um, robustness of those planters, uh, if they're gonna act as, as bollards, so to speak.
They are gonna act as bollards, so to speak, just a little ki- kinder, gentler version of a bollard.
Yeah, just hoping that nobody could drive through them.
Right, that's my.
Well, the.
Plan to have.
If they do, they're gonna regret it.
Well, and I'm, I'm wondering.
'Cause it's gonna be concrete and weigh several, several hundred, several hundred pounds.
There you go, that was the question, are they gonna be whiskey barrels, or are they gonna be something substantial? And what's the, what kind of fencing?
Um, it's gonna be a white vinyl, um, privacy fence.
Yeah, okay.
Sixty-eight feet tall.
So, no one's seen into it.
Correct, that's, yes.
So. I have a question, continuing on the, on the theme of, of protecting your children, um, I know that's gonna be fenced in the playground, and I know they're gonna be accompanied, um, by their parents, or guardians, or some adult, however, being a parent of three, and a grandparent of four, it's very hard to control a little, I was wondering, had you given consideration to some sort of low planting around the border, so that they couldn't dart out into the street, um, so, uh, dense?
Well, if the, if the only, if there's only one gate, and it, and the, the.
No, no, but when they're coming out of the building.
Oh, coming out of the building.
Walking on the walkway, they rip out a mom's hand.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's a squirrel, or whatever.
That's your dog.
Well, that too, but, I didn't know if there was any thought to, I mean, some kind of, I know you don't wanna put a real high planting, but if, if there were like a low, um.
Hedge.
Hedge, kinda thing?
Yeah, there's some hedges out there, I know, I know what you're saying, as a parent of three.
So that they can't, they couldn't dart, and they'd have to work their way through the hedge.
And also on that front, front glass door, I have it already, it's a s- big stop sign that the kids, like, stop.
Yeah.
You know, like.
But they're kids.
Correct, I have three, I've worked in daycare, I'm a teacher, I, I get it, um, I mean, yeah, there's hedges there now, there's, it's kind of like a.
Well, I, I just meant, if you, had you given to, uh, some kind of, like.
I think the thing that's working in, in the favor of safety is that the building is really in the center of the, the lot.
Correct.
And so, there's a lot, there's a fair distance to go before you get, not, not the driveways, but.
But once you're out at the, once you're out at the car, you could rip out a mom's hand.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, is there anything we could do to sort of slow them down?
I mean, that's anywhere, too, that's anywhere.
We can, absolutely do something.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that at all, safety's my first priority.
It's something to think about, 'cause that's a very crazy.
Oh, absolut- I've seen it, yes, and I also have locks on the doors where it'd be key of key fob access, cameras inside, cameras outside, I mean.
I, I was just more worried about darting out of the parking lot.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, we could definitely look at that, the landscape, I have a landscaper that.
Something to think about.
Services that.
Just another question, on, on traffic flow, it looks like you come in from Onset, take a right, so you're gonna have one way, so only one way around? Do you know what I mean, you're coming in on, on, from Onset Avenue, coming, you're taking, you have, you have an arrow here that looks like you go to the right, you go around, how does the flow work, traffic flow?
It, it's two, it's two-way, two-way traffic.
It's two-way, two-way in and out, both of those.
Okay.
Yeah, but, two, two, two-way entrances.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Just based on where you're coming from.
Right.
Right, and you can exit from either.
But, you know what I mean?
It's not a loop all the way around the building?
No.
No, but you can come in and go this way, or you can come in and go this way.
Come in and go that way, okay, it's wide enough, I guess.
It is, it is wide enough, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Other question, um, you've got flood zone X, flood zone, what are you?
A fourteen.
A fourteen, is there any mitigation you're doing, or, and I just don't know, building code, is it requiring you to do anything?
Uh, the building itself is out of the flood zone.
Yeah, the building itself is out of the.
It is.
So, we're not gonna be doing anything, and so, if the parking lot gets flooded, the parking lot drains, um, but, uh, we're hoping that, that, we're, we're talking a hurricane event, if that.
Yeah, so, are there any drains?
Well, there are, uh, I believe, four catch basins onsite.
Okay, do we see those, that they?
Uh, they're identified.
Okay.
On, on the site plan.
Got 'em.
Here.
Oh, yeah, I see them, okay.
Here.
I see the legend, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, through you to the, uh, administrator, uh, did Concom have to rule on this, or it didn't go to conservation?
Hasn't been.
Does it have to go? Did they file, uh, did request for determination?
Uh, site plan review says they need a determination from conservation, so.
Right, that's, that's.
RDA stating that there's no, there's no impact.
We don't have it yet, right, that's, that was sort of where I was going, thank you.
So, we don't, we need Concom, but we don't have it yet.
Right, right.
But you expect no impact, is that, okay.
But we still need the RDA.
Yeah, request for determination, okay.
No, no.
Do we need the, we need that?
Yeah, you, uh, site plan review requires a determination from Concom.
It's just one of those check things.
It's, they're not gonna, it's likely they won't say anything, but they just need to acknowledge that they've looked it over, and don't have to say anything.
Okay.
And we still, we'll need a fire department, even though they, they need to just.
It's existing.
Well, they, they're changing some of the, some of it.
Uh, they're not changing the site plan.
I don't know.
Except for this.
Well, they, I think we still need a statement from the fire department.
Yeah, I think so too.
That says, we don't have any concerns, and, uh, even though there's no impact to sewer, the sewer department still says, we still need a, either, we notified them, right, so that if, if we don't hear.
Right.
Same thing with water, um, the fire department, we like a positive acknowledgement, Concom, we de- we require a positive acknowledgement, um, or, uh, acknowledgement, not a positive or negative statement, but they, yes.
Yeah.
Board of Health?
Same as the sewer, it's, uh, we send it to them, they have twenty-one days to respond, if there's no response, then, then you take it at that value.
But the Board of Health would need to weigh in on this use more heavily than other uses, wouldn't you think?
I don't think they have any voice there.
Because of daycare, they don't have any concern about the children, or the?
I think it's more state.
I think it's more state and.
State, okay.
Yeah, and I guess my other question is, I know there's a lot of licensing involved, um, so are you, is your process to seek approval, and then go through the state process, 'cause sometimes the state has changes, I know.
I'm going through the state process right now, so as I get things, I'm uploading them into a document library that they house.
Okay.
So, I'm waiting for approvals, the last thing, only, the only things left I have to upload are the inspections, so fire, police, and then I have to get my, I have to get the renovations done and put the camera system in.
Okay.
So, I'm kinda just in a holding pattern, until we get the approvals.
Yeah, the site plan would have, would be contingent on all the, all those approvals.
Yes, permits, yes, okay, licensing, it's really a licenser, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which doesn't really affect the site plan, I mean, the use is, the use, whether you can open the business or not, is.
It's really more if they had some change to.
Yeah.
Whatever you had, whatever we've looked at.
Correct.
Okay, who knows?
I got a report from Mr. Cordero.
Say again, please?
Uh, we, will, will we ask for a report through the, Mr. Farady, are we gonna get a report from Mr. Cordero, or you don't think it's needed?
You normally do.
Well, we normally do, yeah, that's why.
Well, and then it comes to the board's discretion, you've heard what the application is, um, the question is, do you think there's enough information?
Uh, Mr. Cordero's heard, heard what the project is, too, do you think there's a reason for us to have you look it over?
So, Madam Chair, I, respectfully, I, I do, uh, and not to be that person to submarine the application, I think it's a great, uh, use, uh, but what I would draw to the board's attention is, it is, it is a change of use, uh, from the bank to, uh, to the daycare facility, and during that process, it is common for the town to take a fresh look at the site.
Yeah.
And determine if there are any requirements that were not previously met that could be met on this site, as part of the approval for the change of use. Um, just as I hear the applicant's story, as I'm looking at the site plan for the first time, a couple of things that come to mind, and this board raised it, is, you know, from an engineer's perspective, what's, what's onsite for stormwater, um, so the applicant provided a statement that there is, there are catch basins onsite, and that's the end of it, we will want that investigated further, to simply make sure they work, uh, quite frankly. Um, other elements that come to mind apropos to the previous applicant's discussion on landscaping, there are ostensibly no landscape buffers on the parcel, presumably approved with the bank when it was approved many years ago, uh, but one of the members brought up this evening about maybe a potential concern of children running into the street, and that hedges and landscaping and fence may be more important, maybe weighed more importantly on this use than they could've been with the bank.
Yeah.
Um, and I'd welcome the opportunity to opine on that a little bit, just to draw some thoughts to the board's attention, um, in addition to the standard impact reports, we'll also do a conditional site assessment, uh, determination of, of pavement curbing, adequacy of site distances, just, almost as if we're looking at it with, with new glasses on, as a new application, but recognizing for the applicant that we know it's not new, so, uh, we don't send them to a panic here this evening, as they leave here going, that we're gonna do, um, try to reinvent everything, that's not the goal, but, um, long story short, I would suggest, uh, just at least a limited review, just to raise some notes for the board's consideration.
Great, so.
I think that those are all good points, and, and good to have a set of professional eyes on, on the site, as we go through this change of use, it was a bank, it's now gonna be childcare, and you may be able to offer some information that would be useful, so.
So, they would need to fund a fifty-three G.
We'll need to fund a fifty-three G account, um.
Are you familiar with that generalized chapter fifty-three G?
No, can you explain?
Uh, we submitted a check with, with the application.
For fifty-three G as well, oh, so you funded the fifty-three?
We funded it for three thousand, three thousand dollars.
I did pay that.
Oh, you're welcome.
And we, we had reason to believe that that was actually ongoing.
Okay, alright, alright, so, we can.
So, what we will do is expedite our contract with Eleanor Maches will be using, so.
Okay.
Great, so.
And they're, they're quite prompt, so.
Okay.
We'll not unduly delay the project, so, we like, it's, that's a good use.
Yeah.
Of a property that's been vacant for a while, so.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you to, uh, Mr. Farady again, um, the, we've talked about traffic and impact, do, do we have any idea what the long-term plan is for the depot street, or the gas station across the street, that facility, that's?
Well, the depot building is.
Well, it's gone, yeah, but I, I, that's why I said, the, the property, what are the?
Yeah, what's happening there?
Yeah.
Oh, the train station's gone.
It's pretty, that whole property looks like it's been razed at this point.
So, that's where some of this, the landscape buffer and containment of kids would be really useful, but it's.
Do we know what they're planning, what, what?
So, we've had a preliminary discussion at Town Hall, brought in a few department heads, it appears that they are going to reinvent it as a convenience store gas station, uh, but we have not seen any official applications for that.
So, that actually puts childcare in a perfect location, people, if anybody's commuting, come and pick your kids up on the way home.
So, continuing, continuing my question, at one point, there was a consideration for putting a large-scale battery storage unit back there, is that off the, off the table?
I, I've never heard of that, and that was not proposed when we discussed it.
It was, it was one of the standalone mega, it was something Ken was looking at, so that's not.
I haven't been part of any discussion that implies that.
Okay.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
Well, that would then be.
Thank you for bringing that up, I have not.
That would then be a, a, a use consideration for the battery, saying proximity to children.
Health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, are we, is one of the conditions going to be to put the buffers up that you're talking about, the, the?
It could be.
We don't know, we don't know, we'll wait until we hear from Mr. Cordero, what his, his thoughts are on.
But it will be, it will be my input that, that.
That that would, that might make sense.
It makes perfect sense, to be honest.
This board does engage in landscape, and we really feel it's important.
I do too.
To beautify the property.
Absolutely.
And if you could support that, we would definitely appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And particularly, if it's, if it's in the name of safety of the users.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Some pine trees, so the kids can climb, you know.
Oh, that's all I need, broken arms, now we're gonna talk about broken arms.
We, we have, we have trees in the back of the site for.
Yeah, some hedging. Yeah. Some hedges, I know exactly what you're talking about, I agree.
Okay. So, continue to, I think it's gonna be the sixth.
Well, how long?
Mr. Cordero.
Yeah.
Uh, if I could share, uh, we are happy to jump into this right away, I was talking with Josh, we'll have the paperwork in place, we'll get a review quickly, but, uh, we'll turn it over very quickly, I would suggest you at least go a month, and the reason for that is, we'll generate the report, we'll get out to the board and the applicant, it will give them time to respond.
Time to, right, well, so.
And then, there's, there's a scenario, they could come back into the next meeting, that everything is on the table and addressed, and.
Yeah, well, we, we could, oh, so you're saying, continue to the next meeting?
No, no, I'm just saying, continue a month.
You give them the month, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, that way they would receive a report and could respond to it, and then, strong progress would be made.
Which is, I think exactly what I was suggesting, at the sixth, this is the eighth, so it's two days. We could do the 20th.
Is there any urgency on your?
There is. I mean, I have this, I've had this property since May. I'm paying rent, I understand, I get it, I get it.
Well, let's do the sixth then.
But no, we just put a bunch of stuff on the sixth, so.
No, I mean.
This'll be quick, right?
Yeah. Bill, that, that works for you, the sixth?
That would work for us, but.
It's close.
It's close.
I don't want to mislead the applicant thinking it'll be a five-minute meeting on the sixth.
Yeah.
I have plenty of time.
So, we put, we put Taco Bell on the sixth, but.
Taco Bell didn't go smoothly today, so.
No, but that's, as far as I can see, that's.
It's not a public hearing, though, that's.
That's, that's a decision.
Yeah, but that's the only thing on for the sixth.
Oh, I thought we put something else. We moved something.
No, we moved something to the 22nd.
Okay, well, alright.
Yeah, our Pierce is, Pierceville is the 20, is this month. So.
Yeah, Pierceville is, is the 22nd. The 22nd is quite full.
Right.
We've got Pierceville, we've got Recovery Road, and we've got Two East Boulevard. But on the sixth, we don't have anything except what we just moved there, which is Taco Bell.
The sixth is a month.
What's that?
The sixth is around a month.
Yeah, yeah, that's, today being the eighth, it's two days shy of a month, it's, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So it will be in room 27.
Yes, it will be in room 27, that's correct. I will re, I will reiterate while we're talking, that the meetings for the planning board, everybody take note of this, if you're interested in planning board meetings, the meetings in October will be the first and third Monday instead of the second and fourth, so we will be meeting on the sixth and the 20th. And we'll be meeting in Town Hall in the conference room in the far end on the top floor.
Room 27.
Room 27.
Correct.
Um, so, so I entertain a motion to.
Wait, is there any public comment?
Yeah, is there any public input? I don't see anybody back there. Is anybody online? Okay, thank you.
I move that we continue 1125 Scribbles Learning Center LLC Slate Pit Site Plan Review 396 Onset Avenue till the meeting of October 6th.
All in favor?
Mike BFTs, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Chair Woltz, aye.
And we just need a, Josh, you gotta give him a form to sign for the continuance.
Oh, right, yep.
You have to sign something that says we all agreed to continue the public hearing. We should have done that for the other guy, too. I didn't think of it.
Living Lawrence. Alright.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Yeah, it's a great use. Great reuse.
Thank you. I hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, nice to meet you.
Wish you well. Let them take caution when they're done.
Yes.
No, I just need to use a projector.
I thought we were going home.
Oh.
It's the Josh show. Josh's show is next.
We wish we were going home.
We're about to extend the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, boy, we're already at eight o'clock. Oh, no, what time are we?
It's eight thirty.
Twenty. I keep looking at that going, God, it just stays right where it was.
It was right, it was right for a minute there.
Yeah, right, it's right twice a day.
I looked at my watch, I looked at the air, I was like, oh, wow.
Okay.
So we gotta open public hearings for each of these?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, item number two is just got these in a different order. Okay. Item number two, in accordance with the provision of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 8, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the Wareham Multi-Service Building, Room 520, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts 02571, to consider proposed amendments to the Wareham Zoning Bylaw in order to bring the bylaw into compliance with the requirements of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A, also known as the MBTA Community Zoning Law.
What happened to the one before that?
Um, she put them in reverse order
Oh, okay.
of these sheets.
Oh, alright, I was looking at the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, that's.
That's why I was confused. Okay, thank you.
Oh, my gosh, I skipped on that, too. They're all in different orders.
We can go in whatever order you would.
I apologize.
You started opening this one.
But we're doing the MBTA one, item three.
It's the fun one anyway.
Okay, alright, so shall I continue reading the rest of the page? Uh, summary of proposed amendments. The proposed zoning amendments are intended to comply with the state's requirements for multifamily zoning in MBTA-adjacent communities. The revisions include, but are not limited to, present and, present and make changes to the Commercial General District, permitting multifamily housing as of right within the Commercial General District, establish, establishing dimensional and dimensity, and density requirements consistent with Section 3A guidelines, modifying definitions and procedures related to multifamily residents. The full text and maps of the proposed amendments are available for public review at the Wareham Planning Department, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, during regular business hours, and may also be viewed online at wareham.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendments should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments may also be submitted to the planning board in advance of the hearing.
I move that we open the aforementioned public hearing.
Aye.
Uh, all in favor?
Mike BFTs, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, public hearing is open.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Farady, before he begins his presentation, did we get any written comments in advance of the?
No, no written comments. As far as I'm aware, no one has asked about them yet. But I think after tonight's meeting, I'll have a really good direction and the best way to post these, and probably moving forward, I'll have some open discussion meetings with the public to address them as well. I found that worked really well for our last two articles that went to town meeting, so I'm, I'm planning to do that as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'll jump in. I'm gonna share my screen. Um, okay, MBTA Communities, it is a law that was established under Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3A.
Right here, so he's making sure people can see the screen.
So, under Chapter 40A, Section 3A, the Economic Development Bill passed in 2021 created what is known as MBTA Communities. MBTA Communities are communities that are served by the MTV, MBTA, along with adjacent communities to such. So we are considered an adjacent community to the town of Middleborough with them having a commuter rail station. And the goal of the Economic Development Bill in the MBTA Communities was to zone for multifamily housing as of right to increase the housing popular, or production of the state in these communities. So, the requirements, it applied to 177 MBTA Communities. Again, they're served by the MBTA or adjacent to. At the time, each community was required to adopt at least one zoning district where multifamily housing is allowed as of right, meaning that there's no special permit or discretionary approval required. Some of the key elements of the law were to allow multifamily housing, three-plus units by right. It had to be located within a half a mile of a transit station if you were an actual MBTA community. They had a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, no age restriction, and they really wanted to limit the studios or one-bedrooms, so they wanted to make them family-oriented as well. So, compliance at the time, municipalities were required to submit an action plan to the DHCD, which is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Good for us, we did that. So we identified our Commercial General District as our MBTA Community Zoning District, and on, after sending that, we did receive a response from the Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Uh-oh, so they said that our district that we identified is not fully compliant with the, what they were looking for. So they responded to us with a letter, they identified some deficiencies in our commercial, general commercial district, and we had a chance to respond. In the letter, what they told us was, we are now placed in what is called interim compliance, and they gave us one year from the date that we received the letter, which was June 3rd of 2025. So currently, we are working within interim compliance, and we will be considered out of compliance come June 3rd of 2026. So why is being in compliance important to the town? The town, one of, I'll call it the carrot and the stick method, right now they are holding some grants as hostage to being compliant with the, the zoning requirement under 3A. To give you just a few descriptions of what those are, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, Housing Works, Local Capital Projects Fund, Housing Choice Initiative, and there's, I will call it a short list after this as well. So historically, just to give you some background, the town has received 3.55 million for roads, utilities and sewer lines under the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, and we've received approximately 500,000 from the Seaport Economic Council, which would be at stake potentially for our lack of compliance. So, the Commercial General Zoning District, I have it highlighted here in green. You can see that it starts at 195. At the center of it, it follows Cranberry Highway. To generalize yourself, this would be centered at Cranberry Highway. Most of the distances along this district range in the area of 600 to 700 feet off of the road until you get to Charge Pond Road, where it then follows Charge Pond Road up to 495. So that gives you an idea of the size of the zoning district that we have identified. The Executive Office has not stated any issues with the actual size of the zoning district, so we believe that the size should be in compliance already. Okay. So, moving forward along this path, I've identified items within the letter that was addressed to us, but I've also cited back to where they are located in the current zoning bylaws, and I'll, I'll briefly go through that, and I'll explain why we might want to take the action that I've presented. So currently, the state law says we have to allow multifamily housing as of right. Our current zoning bylaw allows for apartments in mixed-use buildings. A mixed-use building is defined by a commercial space on the first floor and then apartments above. So realistically, we are not too far off from what they are looking for. It's just the commercial use restriction that we've applied to it that is a problem for the Executive Office. So what we would look to do is amend the principal use regulations to allow multifamily housing, three-plus units, as a principal use in just the Commercial General District as of right. I want to emphasize that a lot of what I'm presenting tonight, it is either restricted directly to the Commercial General Zoning District or even more tightly restricted to multifamily residential construction. So where I propose that we maybe grant a waiver or some type of ability for them to find a way past it, it is only for multifamily, multifamily housing projects.
So not one and two-family?
Correct.
So how does this?
Or, or any type of commercial development either.
Okay.
How does this interact with the Wareham Village 1 District? Because that's right in the, I thought this was the Bay Overlay. Oh, that's not Main Street?
No, that's not Main Street.
Sorry, Main Street would be down here.
Oh, okay, alright, I thought it was.
I guess the question I would have is, is there, is there space that's, is there undeveloped land out there?
Um, I mean, looking at just some aerials, it looks like there's potential room for growth.
I guess along the south side of 28.
But you also have to remember that some of these properties could be redeveloped as well.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, we're back to the as of right, what does that mean, kind of like the ADUs? So you have to comply with sideline setback, Title V, blah, blah, blah.
And building, building codes and.
Yep.
Going towards.
I always, I just wish they wouldn't say as of right.
That is a one word or a group of words that gets us.
Well, I think, I think people misunderstand that. You still have to meet code, you still have to meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
Title V.
It's likely that the, the developers that are bringing these projects forward are no, this isn't a new process for them.
They're not strangers to that process, yeah. It's, it's homeowners and, and it came up when we were talking about ADUs and people were not understanding what as of right means.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Okay.
And Josh, is that, just back on like Title V, is that town sewer or no? Is it all, would it all be Title V systems?
I believe Cranberry Highway is sewer.
I think Cranberry Highway is sewer.
Okay, so you have a sewer capacity issue?
It will say that out, out Charge Pond Road, it's not.
No.
Okay.
Because the Y is on septic.
Okay.
So it would be an interesting, but.
A sewer capacity.
They would still have to go.
Well, and as I look at that map, there's not a lot of property beyond, on that side of Charge Pond Road that's available.
Right.
Right now.
Well, I lived there and I walked it, I can tell you there's not a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Could, could you help me understand the map on the bad area right, right here, the green area to, to the left? So that's.
195.
This, okay, so, um, this would be your like Five Guys, the hotel.
Okay.
That, that type of stuff.
That's Route 28.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, what would development down there do to traffic? I mean, and that's a state highway, right, so we can't control improvements or anything.
Correct.
And there's really no developable land on that space, I mean, at all.
Well, so that's where the, the new apartment building went by Five Guys.
Yep, so the 200 Rosebrook is actually here.
That's Rosebrook, but the, the apartments are within the green.
Yeah.
The ones that are next to the town suites.
Right, and then.
Right, right.
And the four, but the 48, the 48 project is going in right behind that, right?
40B.
40B, I'm sorry.
That's, this is 200 Rosebrook here, you're right.
Orbital housing, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the traffic impact down there is gonna be interesting.
Well, it's all right close to the highway, so.
Three families versus apartments, though.
You say you want a Taco Bell.
Yes, it's three plus, so.
Right.
Could be three to.
Fifty.
So, the property owner in much of that space is Makepeace. Have you talked to them about any plans they might have or thoughts?
So if we're going back to the discussion of, you know, we could pull up the Business Development Overlay District, but there, that district was created for housing at one point.
Right.
And they've assured the town that they're no longer moving in that direction, and it was likely to help for solar. Is what they told us.
Right.
Right.
But they're not against putting housing in there, as we can see by their project at 200 Rosebrook either.
Yep.
So, what, what we have right now is, they have told us they are looking for solar in the BDOD, and they have built 40B projects within, just outside of this district.
Right. And, I mean, I think it's a stupid question, but, so you have to make this available, but if no one comes forward, no one comes forward.
Right, the law doesn't state that the town goes in and builds or constructs these projects, it's that we allow a space where they are as of right, and they meet the zoning requirements.
That's my understanding as well, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask you a silly question? Are we really adjacent to Middleborough? I mean, is it Rochester in between?
No, no. We share our town line with Middleborough.
Yeah, we share, yeah.
We share a town line with Middleborough.
Where?
Uh, I think it's this funny-looking triangle up here.
It's not a lot. Right over 58, right over 58 Bridge.
A little tiny area.
Yeah, that's all you need.
It's about this big.
Yeah, when, when you have the discussion of, is this zoning district actually gonna help commuters to the MBTA station?
Yeah.
Most communities are admittedly against this.
But, you're, you're right, a lot of communities are fighting the MBTA community law. Right, um, the thing that I would like to point out is, if, if the biggest issue is the density of housing, our Commercial General District already allows for more than what they're looking for.
Does it have to be contiguous?
Does the district have to be contiguous?
Can you have it look two?
Oh, you mean the way that we have it laid out here?
Yeah.
Well, that's water that's separated.
Yeah, technically, this is contiguous. It's, it's separated by a body of water. And again, we, we've already submitted to the Executive Office that this is the district we would like to use, and, you know, we, we didn't hear concerns of that nature. In fact, we didn't, we didn't hear concerns about the, the actual district itself, it's just that some of the requirements of the. It's just that some of the requirements of the zoning bylaw did not allow for what they would consider as-of-right. Okay. So that, that's number one. I have twelve more of these. Okay. So this just expands on that, add a new line to Article Three, the Use Table, to allow multifamily residential, three or more units, as-of-right in the GC District. And then we get into some more finer points of the zoning bylaw. So Section eight twenty-four point one, currently, there is a five-acre minimum lot size requirement for projects within the Commercial General District. They're saying that five acres is too much of a barrier for these projects to continue, so a reduction. I have provided one acre, but there is a discussion on what that could actually be.
But that, that could have then unintended consequences beyond MBTA development.
It's a lot of units.
Right, I mean, somebody could then develop a one-acre parcel there not even related to these other requirements.
Well, now, one-acre parcel with the setbacks, that's.
Yeah, yeah. I will say, okay, so if, if it is a five-acre minimum lot size, the, I, sorry. It is a five-minute, acre minimum lot size currently, this is one of the barriers that the.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying there's consequences beyond just meeting the compliance for MBTA. This could then generate other kinds of development that I haven't thought about or may not, yeah.
Yep, it's definitely a fair point and I think, you know, a lot of the unintended consequences of this law is where you have a lot of communities fighting out against it.
Right.
So, like I said, I put the reduction to one acre in there only because I wanted to emphasize that their idea was fifteen units per acre for development. The way that our current, the allowed use in there, we actually allow for up to forty, it's thirty-nine units per acre, but we have the five-acre minimum. So, okay.
So, sorry, sorry.
Yep.
So reduce it to one acre. We would, is the forty acres right now, I haven't looked at that part of the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Is it five acres, forty units right now?
So the, the way that it's laid out is for the first unit, you need five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And then you need an additional thousand square feet per unit.
Okay.
But that wouldn't have to be multifamily under this broadly interpreted. To beat the MBTA requirement, they'd have to be multifamily.
Oh, oh, so you're saying under my proposal, okay, so there are sections moving forward where I strictly say if you're doing a project that complies with the Chapter forty-eight, Section Three, multifamily. And I'd be, I, I think it would be appropriate to put it on this one as well.
Right. That, that, okay.
Yeah, so, and just remember, this is not me coming to you guys tonight and expecting you to make a decision. This is the, the opening of discussion which I ultimately see taking probably until October twentieth.
Do you foresee more public hearings for this continued, you expect, excuse me?
Yeah.
Is this public hearing going to be continued?
Well, okay, that's up to you guys, but I would likely, I would likely see it continued, yeah.
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 Okay, so, okay.
And as I had mentioned before, I'm going to be doing open workshops about.
No, no, so the anticipation is these three public hearings will likely all be continued.
Tonight, correct.
So Business for the Six, which we, I was anticipating when I said.
Yeah, well, we've got now two, two things plus this, which is better than tonight.
This by far is the most extensive of the three that I'm bringing forward.
Yeah.
Or maybe, maybe it is, depending on how you guys feel.
What do you try for this fall?
Yeah.
We have to get it in this fall.
We have to get it in this fall.
Well, we don't have to. We could almost wait till Springtown Meeting, but then we're like right up against the.
Yeah.
Well, this one we've got to get in. The other two, maybe.
Understanding that two town meetings could potentially be a fatal error in getting this approved, we did ask the Executive Office for an extension to one year. They didn't say no, but they weren't really willing to say yes either. What they said was you have an extension to June of twenty-six. So that's why I felt it was important to bring it to this town meeting in case we needed the Springtown Meeting to really just iron out the rest of it.
Particularly if there's some issue that they object to.
Right. You know, this could be approved at our town meeting and disapproved by the Attorney General.
That's right.
But then we would still get a conditional extension or?
Who knows?
They said June of twenty-six.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too much of a risk, okay.
Okay, so moving on. Section six thirteen, principal residential buildings per lot in the general, our Commercial General District allow multiple principal residential buildings by right to meet a fifteen-unit acre density. Again, that's if a project wanted to come in and, and split their buildings to not just have one. The minimum would have to at least meet fifteen units per acre density. And then six twenty-three, Commercial Districts. In the Commercial District, the building footprint limitation shall not apply to multifamily dwelling, it's allowed as-of-right pursuant to Section Three of the Zoning Act. So that's kind of the caveat that I've added moving forward to a lot of these. Okay.
Could you add that caveat to the line in the Use Table to cover, cover it everywhere there or? Cause you're gonna have to have a column in the Use Tables.
Yep, which I, yep, and I've identified that and where we're only identifying Commercial Districts as a yes or allowed.
Yeah, I know. We've got so many interwoven commentary.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, let me take a look at that. Potentially, yes.
And then just to. How does the fact that we're rewriting the zoning bylaws?
Just what I was gonna say.
Impact.
With the first meeting tomorrow.
Suppose we get this approved at Fall Town Meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But then the whole bylaw is gonna get rewritten. Do we, what happens to your MBTA approval at that point? Once we've got the approval, we're good?
So honestly, I don't think we'd get the approval, you know, October twenty-eighth. That's not gonna happen.
I just meant, I'm, I'm talking.
Nope.
The other.
Yeah.
Impact to the other process.
Which has to, which has to get to town meeting for us to meet the grant requirements.
Right, the Springtown Meeting.
Right.
So it's just gonna get through town meeting for that. It doesn't have to have gotten all the way through the AG.
Unclear.
Yeah, doesn't really.
Unclear.
But I'm just saying, we're gonna rewrite the bylaw. Suppose we screw this up somehow.
But in rewriting it, wouldn't we just roll that in?
I hope not. Not, I mean, not, the, the, not that the intent, we would roll in. The problem is, as you could see, he's taught, he's weaving every comment to every other section. And hopefully, we're gonna straighten a lot of that up.
Right. Yeah, but the, the content of this would get woven into the, the new bylaw.
So.
Which will be total reform edits.
Yeah, right, right.
So the way I'm presenting it currently is you amend each section where they've identified a flaw. The alternative to that is we create a section under the Commercial General District that says if you are building as-of-right, you have a waiver or you're not required to meet these sections of the bylaw.
Which is the way we've approached other kinds of things in the past, which has caused other problems because you have inconsistencies.
You missed something.
Yep. So I, there's really two ways of presenting this. I, I could have said, hey, here's your Commercial General District guidelines. Here's everything that we need to change about the zoning bylaw or at least make a waiver to if you're doing an as-of-right multifamily.
Or you could have created an overlay district.
What, we have a meeting tomorrow. We might present that to Judy on what are other towns doing? Cause I'm sure you've got other towns running up against.
That's a moving target.
No, right. I just felt like.
See what she recommends, but I, I agree with you. It's a challenge.
We have to intersect. We have to make sure that we don't trip ourselves.
I mean, I don't think the Planning Board is gonna talk about this at public hearings and then not have that conversation spill into the work that we're doing with the Barrett Planning Group.
Correct.
I imagine this will be heavily talked about. But again, I felt it was important, at the time when I started doing this process, we hadn't approved anyone for the RFP yet.
I understand. I'm not questioning what you did. I was more worried about how do we make sure we don't.
Yep.
She might just have some tips for us, given what you're presenting, which is great work, by the way.
Sure.
To, to how do we incorporate it?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to second-guess you. I'm trying to avoid.
No, I'm.
Making a future problem.
Yeah.
Understood.
I'm just coming up for air here.
Yep.
Does Phil need to stay for this? Is this useful for Phil to be here?
Actually, Madam Chief, this, this part is, so I'm interested in this, but I'll probably duck out after this.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're not.
I'm more concerned about the other parts than this part.
Oh, okay. So thirty percent pervious landscape requirement, again, they've, they've identified that as a barrier to what their ideal as-of-right is, or their recommended, or, you know, however you may call it, the ideal. So they've identified that. So again, I put in shall not apply to multifamily dwellings as allowed by right. Okay, so then for eight twenty-three point one, add minimum unit size requirements of the section shall not apply to multifamily housing. So eight twenty-three point one in our zoning bylaw says if you have a two-bedroom unit, it should be X size in square feet. If you have a three-bedroom unit, it should be X size in square feet. They, they do not agree with putting a size limitation on the size of the unit. So, okay, so eight twenty-four point two is a coastal wetland setback. Mu- much of this district does, has no implication on this. In fact, if I was to go back, the only coastal wetland impact is in this corner down here as Parker Mill Pond after the dam is no longer considered coastal. So there's a small area down here that is affected by it. We, we generalized and made that argument to them. They identified it as an issue still, so we basically said it shall not apply to the multifamily housing as a lose, as, as of right in the Commercial General District. But we also added the caveat that, you know, you still have to meet all the Wetland Protection Act regulations in the Wetland Protective Bylaw.
I don't wanna be that person, but to back up for a second to eight twenty-three, that's six hundred square feet of livable floor area, do they, does it make sense to use DHCD guidelines for housing? For affordable housing as the square footage guidelines?
Their comments to us was that we shouldn't put any limitation on it.
Okay.
I would have a hard time believing that they would argue against their own guidelines.
Well, except that it is for affordable housing.
Right.
It's not market rate housing, which this could be, and maybe, maybe if, yeah, be surprised if they would find that as a minimum.
So it's definitely the, I can, I can ask the question. They, I will say that when we sent our, when we sent our proposal to them, if you will, you know, they thanked us for sending it over. They were very open to reviewing it.
Yeah.
And then we set up a meeting with them to discuss it. So I think an open conversation with them is still something that is entertainable.
Okay.
And if we come up to these types of questions, I'd be more than happy to reach out and.
Well, and even just for the zoning bylaw, it might be useful to set the, set the DHCD affordable housing square footages as minimums.
Yeah.
Across the board and, and not even name them, but just refer to them.
Yeah.
You know, if they change, then the bylaw changes. Just, it just occurred to me. Anyway, keep going, sorry.
Uh, okay. So the two-hundred-foot coastal wetland setback, so we, we say they have to still meet the Wetlands Protection Act and that they have to meet the Wetland Protective Bylaw. But they shall not be subject to the, the coastal wetland setback under the zoning bylaw. Okay, so then eight twenty-three point two is the utility provision. So in the zoning bylaw, we have a requirement that multifamily dwellings be serviced by public water systems that are adequate in terms of fire protection and domestic use, shall not apply to, again, this, these projects in this district. But we also put in the caveat, such developments shall remain subject to all applicable state, local regulations governing water supply, fire protection, and building safety.
How, if, that seems.
So my, my guess on this one is that fire protection and the building code have already identified what type of fire suppression system goes into apartment-style buildings. Cause that's ultimately what these will be. And that, we can't require them to be on the public water system, but if they wanted to provide their own type of water system.
Okay, so they're not getting away from having to provide adequate fire protection.
Right, they're.
You just can't tell them where they get the water from.
Yeah, that will be required by building code.
Right.
Wow.
So they could put a water tower on the roof and.
Well, they, yeah, they probably have to do a tank. They would probably have to do a cistern of some sort if they're on a well.
Yeah.
They just won't come up with the capacity from a well to support a fire, fire protection system.
Unless you build a huge tank on the, somewhere.
You build a tank, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, to, to your point, they're not getting away with providing these. They're just not limited to our access to water.
Big well.
So just a question.
Yep.
Why would we care where would they get the, why did we have this bylaw saying it's gotta come from town water?
Multifamilies, yeah.
Just, what are we, what are we giving up? I'm just, anything?
The requirement that it serves to be served.
We're taking away the, it has to come from town water. Why was that a requirement?
Yeah, I never.
Well, is, is our multifamily dwellings elsewhere required to have public water? Or municipal water?
I think I'd have to look at that section.
All right, so it's a question. You don't have to answer it to me.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
But we could pump the aquifer dry trying to.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's where I think a tank makes sense, cause they can trickle-fill it.
Yeah.
They don't have to fill it all at once and then they've got it there and, you know, ready supply.
Okay, so currently, the zoning bylaw requires an outdoor recreation area for these type of uses. You have a requirement of five hundred square feet per two-bedroom unit and a thousand square feet per three-bedroom unit. So this one, I wanted to keep into the provision that we can't require it, but I point out that our design standards of Article Seven do suggest it.
Yeah, so encourage.
So let's build a slum with no open space.
I know. Who would wanna live there?
Yeah.
Honestly.
And I.
They just built a place in Middleborough across from Seamass. All they have is where the leachery field is in the middle. When you get a place, put your grow inside your steps and that's it. They're thirty-five units, yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
They have the nice aroma of Seamass also.
Kidding.
You know, we, we used to, on subdivisions, we used to require a play area a long time ago. And they went south, yeah, fifteen years ago. You know, first thing to develop comes back is when a thing is built up. You know, first thing to develop comes back is when a thing is built out, he sells off the lot for a lot and then move on. Kids don't go outside and play anymore anyway, everybody's got their game boy in the house.
Terrible.
So under twelve thirteen sites alteration special permit, again, we require alteration of a site that is greater than fifty thousand square sheet feet. I say that it shall not apply to the multifamily housing allowed as of right. Because they've identified that as a type of special permit or permit that's a requirement to the activity, and now we can't do that, so.
Fifty thousand square feet's big though.
Over acre.
These people writing these laws aren't going to the good towns, so they have to do this.
Yeah, 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 you're right, it's just, it's just over an acre, so never mind, keep going.
So then I, again, I remain adamant that you still have to meet stormwater wetlands and environmental performance standards.
Yes, yep.
Okay, fifteen twenty, parking requirements. I believe we currently say something along the lines of two parking spaces per unit, or it might be off in that number. But we require a certain amount of parking spaces that they don't agree with, and this also triggers site plan review, which there's no site plan review requirement under their act. So again, modify it.
If it was within walking distance of MBTA, that would be one thing, but.
Who, who thinks these laws up?
I know, and do we have to say unless modified? If they wanna modify, they could seek a waiver from us, do we have to open that door? Are they saying you need to say that?
Has to be as of right with no permitting.
Barriers, yeah.
Incumbrances.
Why?
So after tonight, I'll share the letter that we received with you guys, it may be beneficial for you
Yeah.
to understand my stance on a lot of this.
Yeah.
Sure. I, we trust you, we know, I'm just, it's just interesting that, that they would go to all of these extra levels down.
So actually, this is the end of the MBTA community's presentation.
Great work.
I've taken some notes on some clarifiers that we need to identify.
Yeah.
In reality, we don't have any choice.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna sound so blunt on it, but, you know, we've, we've benefited from the grant programs that they're, they're threatening us with.
And in the, the zoning grant, we had to certify that we had submitted, so.
If, if this were actually to be implemented the way it's.
Intended by the state, yeah, the way that the state put the law together, yeah. And I think that really emphasizes why a lot of communities have been fighting it. I mean, I, there are a lot of, I'll say waivers requested in what we've identified, which unfortunately, a lot of the waivers that we identified have almost allowed these projects, but have given them the ability to maintain some type of community feel, if you will, when you talk about the recreational space to them.
But you get an unscrupulous developer and they can put up concrete block housing.
Yeah, has this, has this been?
Like the HUD development in the sixties.
Has this been practically applied to, has, if they give it to.
Anywhere.
Give it to a team and say, design, design, do your worst.
I mean, look at the sixties.
That's a, it's a good exercise to take on, really seriously.
They would all, they would all fit under these requirements.
Yeah, and I.
All failed developments.
It's actually what we did a number of times when we were doing zoning work when I had my office.
Yeah.
That we, or planning work, that we would, we would take a zoning bylaw and, and say, okay.
Identify worst-case scenario.
Let's spend two days and design the worst thing that we can possibly imagine that fits within these bylaws. Just as a test.
Yeah, and I think, I think, is Middleborough in compliance now?
No, they were, they were still arguing against it and there was some form of a settlement discussion.
But I know Marblehead suit, Milton is still fighting it, there's a whole, host of communities.
Yeah.
But you could build a sixty-story concrete tower under these bylaws.
Do you still have to fall within the zoning, but, cause that doesn't.
Yeah, we have the right, the height requirement.
Thirty-five foot height requirement.
That's a, that's.
That's a fire department thing.
I'm not sure that that meets the intent of the MBTA, cause that's still a. That's a building code?
No, that's a zoning bylaw, it's a dimensional requirement.
But that's, that, it would be no review, that, where would that review happen?
And how do you get forty units?
So it would, it would go through the building commissioner.
Has to go through the building commissioner, and there's a height limitation based on the fire equipment available to fight fires.
And how do you do forty units on one acre?
Right, and that was.
In comply.
How did we?
So the forty, just to be clear, the forty eight, forty units per acre is currently what we allow. They are looking for a, a minimum of fifteen units per acre to meet the, the law that they've presented.
Yeah.
We have just substantially allowed more than that.
How do you build that?
And still have any green space and parking on site and.
And you build a concrete, okay, so it's not, it's, it's thirty-five feet, three stories, four stories.
Yeah, four stories you can still do in wood.
But you could do it concrete too.
You could.
Concrete walls.
You could do concrete anywhere, I mean, somebody could build a concrete house.
Yeah, we don't have any design requirements, aesthetics.
Actually, there's.
They have three D-printed concrete houses.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
And, and just as a quick aside, there is a house down by me that is concrete block from the nineteen forties, and they molded, the, the concrete block was molded to look like wood shingles.
You could do wonderful things, I'm thinking of nineteen sixties HUD.
Yeah, I know, yes.
HUD development.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, it does appear that you have a resident that would like to speak too. My presentation is complete on this one.
Okay, um, yes, can we let Mr. Manese in? You're muted.
Here we go, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, yeah, it just doesn't, when I click unmute, it just takes a minute for the system to, oh, regulate. So I think, there was confusion, I think it was just clarified, it's fifteen units per acre. We already allow that, you saw the development across from the CVS between Main and High Street. That's pretty much fifteen units per acre, isn't it? And they're just going in front of the ZBA to get the same thing, so they could easily make Village, Wareham Village One and Two MBTA community designated area, as long as you have fifty acres. You don't have to build anything, you can.
As long as you have fifty acres?
Huh?
As long as you have fifty acres?
I, that's a minimum number of acres you have to have inclusive in, I believe, in.
For the zoning.
The district has to be fifty acres.
Correct.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
And it can be broken up.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be in one area.
Yep.
So it could be multiple areas of the town, yeah, up, up there where you were talking about Depot Street earlier and Onset Ab and Great Neck.
They're not in the zone.
Wait a second, excuse me, please, that, that could also be designated an area. So we had until December of this year and they got the extension till June. There are no documents on the town website, and I went to the planning board, the planning department for documents on all three of the bylaw proposals. There were none available for me. So this is all new to me, as it is to you. And I also went to the clerk's office first, then I went across to planning, and I did send Mr. Schultz a notice of this. So it's a good idea, I questioned the location of it, was that six months ago it first came out, nine months ago? They discussed it, and they being planning and development under Ken at that point in time about utilizing this area. I'd like to see the lot sizes minimalized to existing lots if you're gonna do this, and as long as you can fit the density requirement of fifteen units per acre, which could be a quarter acre with four units on it. Right?
The math works out, yes.
Yeah, so that's just my points on it, I'd rather see something be done correctly than to hurry through it, and you do have a bit of time, so think about it, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Just to your, to your comment about not having the documents available, this is just being presented now, and I think it was probably still being developed until right before the meeting and will be made available following this presentation for review.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing I'd like to add to that is I, I wanted to get a feel from the board of if this was the direction we wanted to go in by identifying each section, or do we wanna identify the Commercial General District and then allow for the waivers under that section solely, so.
So Mr. Manese, you're not the first, you're not the only one seeing, or hearing about, hearing the content for the first time, we are as well. But it will be available for your review.
Yep, okay.
All right, so do we want to continue this to the sixth?
When do you wanna bring it up again?
I think I've got a lot of good feedback from the board tonight. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm just looking at the agenda.
Yeah. Do you wanna push it to the twentieth of October? Or is that getting too late?
So, so my only fear with that is I would expect a, it doesn't have to be a, I need a recommendation from the planning board to bring it to town.
Oh, to town meeting on the twenty-seventh.
It's gotta be the sixth.
And I.
It's gotta be the sixth.
I would like at least two more meetings in front of the board, one to say, you know, these are the, this is what we've identified, and then give you a chance to, you know.
So the sixth, then the twentieth makes sense.
We don't have three meetings.
Right, we have three meetings available, so if we did the sixth, then the twentieth.
That would be fine with me.
So actually, that timing might work out best anyway, cause going to the sixth gives you more time now when you, the bulk of the changes might need to happen, and then some tweaking and fine tuning for the twentieth.
Yep, and what I would likely do is hold two workshop-style meetings, one at the end of September, and then probably one right before your meeting on the sixth, so maybe the week of, you know, that, the week before the sixth.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the MBTA zoning bylaw change till October sixth.
All in favor?
I'd be aptiest, aye.
Uh, Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, understanding the lateness that we're predicted with currently, may I recommend that we continue amendments to Article Fifteen?
We, I, I think we should probably, we have to open the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then continue.
Then continue.
What you're recommending?
Yeah, no, maybe we don't get into it tonight and.
So we have not done the contractor bays yet?
Nope, I, I think we could iron that one out tonight, or at least.
And you wanna.
During the presentation.
Continue the, the item four to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you wanna open it and then move it, or continue?
Yeah, we should open it and then continue.
Okay, we'll, we'll open, open the Article Fifteen item and continue it, and then we will move on to the contractor bays.
So we'll continue it till?
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
September twenty-second? Okay.
Okay, let me make sure I've got the right one. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Lodge, Chapter Forty A, Section Five, Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September eighth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM at the Wareham Multi Service Building Room Five Twenty, Forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider proposed amendments to the Wareham zoning bylaw, specifically Article Fifteen, land use permitting requirements. The proposed amendments would revise and clarify the procedures, criteria, and applicability of various land use permitting, permitting requirements administered by the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, including but not limited to site plan review, special permits, and application submission standards. The full text of the, the proposed amendments is available for public inspection at the Wareham Planning Department, Wareham Town Hall, fifty-four Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, during regular business hours, and may be viewed on, may also be viewed on the town's website at wareham.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing and provide comment.
I move that we open the public hearing on.
Article Fifteen.
Article Fifteen and immediately continue till September twenty-second.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd be aptiest, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Lodge, Chapter Forty A, Section Five of the Wareham Planning Board, the Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September eighth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM at the Wareham Multi Service Building, Room Five Twenty, Forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider proposed amendments to the Wareham zoning bylaw, specifically summary of proposed zoning amendments dash contractor bays. One, Article Two definitions, add two new definitions. Contractor bay is a small, non-residential tenant space typically under five thousand square feet gross floor area designed for trade contractors with work and storage indoors, limited screened outdoor storage and possible accessory office. Contractor yard, an establishment for large, larger-scale contractor operations with more extensive outdoor storage than allowed for a contractor bay. Two, Article Three, table of use regulations. Insert quote contractor bay unquote as a new use, allowed by special permit in certain commercial, industrial, and marine-related districts and prohibited in residential districts. Add related footnotes regarding outdoor storage limits and screening. Three, Article Fifteen, site plan review and special permits. Create a new section establishing special permit standards for contractor bays, including all activities within enclosed buildings, limits on outdoor storage, maximum ten percent lot area or twenty-five hundred square feet, location and screening requirements. Controls on noise, lighting, hours of operation, vehicle queuing, hazardous materials handling, and stormwater management. Design standards to minimize impacts on abutters. Required findings and conditions for permit approval. Item Four, Article Six, off-street parking and loading. Add specific parking and loading requirements for contractor bays based on floor area, office space, and company vehicles. Five, housekeeping changes. Update indices, sign regulations, and the fee structure to reflect the new use. The complete text of the proposed amendments is available for review at the Wareham Planning Department, fifty-four Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
I move that we open the public hearing on the zoning ball, zoning bylaw changes related to contractor bays.
All in favor?
Be aptiest, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Chair votes aye, the public hearing is open.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, the amendments that I. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, the amendments that I am supplying to you tonight, uh, I'll save very slightly from what you had read into the record only because I've had discussions with the building commissioner and our inspector about uh these types of uses and what they've seen. Uh, so we've kind of refined it a little bit since having those discussions. The definition section, again, contractor bay defined and contractor yard defined. Amending the use table uh to allow it by special permit outside of our residential districts um and our redevelopment districts. So uh, I'll just really jump into the, the meat and potatoes of this one. We, I think we, we've found a desire for this just looking at a number of applications that have come before the board recently. Um, realize that maybe having a set of standards for these type of uses would be uh beneficial to the board and to applicants just to understand what the expectation is coming in front of the town with this type of project. So I think we've all kind of understood the type of use that they're bringing forward. These bays are meant for uh tradesmen, uh, whether it be electrical, plumbing, HVAC, that type of thing. Uh, I would like to point out that I think it's important that we um limit out any type of um mechanical type of operation, I mean, uh, like working on cars or trucks or anything like that. Cuz most of the time, these buildings are not designed or not constructed in a way to um receive that type of use.
Oil separation and.
Right, right. And where you would likely have a um, an entity renting the building, they're probably not gonna, they're gonna try to fill the tenant spaces as quickly as they can. And they're probably not gonna be so picky on what type of uses coming in. So again, we've identified and we've almost listed a number of uses that we expect to be in these. And then I've provided a set of standards for the board to consider. Uh, one thing I was, um, that kind of came into my head is whether we wanted to put this in the actual zoning bylaw or if we wanted to just amend uh like the definitions, the use table, and then put this in rules and regulations of the board. The, the benefit to doing that would be that it wouldn't require town meeting to amend. It would be just a, a meeting of the planning board. But that's, that's a conversation we can have and we can always remove some of these things and gear it into a revision of the rules and regulations.
If you don't add the row to the use table, how do you, how do you identify them then?
Well, I, I think we would still have to add the definitions to the zoning bylaw and the, the road to the.
Then you still have to go to town meeting.
For those two identifiers. And then, I'm, I'm saying if we wanted to remove the rest and put those in the rules and regulations.
I, I think in general, we've been in favor of the things that are appropriate in rules and regulations. Um, and then, um, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and the, the thing that makes sense with putting it in rules and regulations is that if it's something new like this, that it gives us a little bit more flexibility to fine tune it.
Yep.
Uh, at least for the first five years or whatever.
So that goes back to my question, though. You were, I thought the way it was written is that it was gonna go to the Z B A and they don't have rules and regulations.
Uh, well, then this may be a good time to um start them.
And why were you gonna say, now that it doesn't require a variance, why, why, why one board versus the other? The reason it went to the Z B A before is it required a variance.
A variance, cuz we don't have a use identified for it.
Right.
Um, no, I mean, there's no actual reason it has to go to the Board of Appeals versus the.
It was more a general question, what, what boards are appropriate? For example, in the other bylaw that we continued.
Mm-hmm.
You sent a lot of stuff to, the bylaw sent a lot of, I'm not challenging.
Yeah, yeah.
But you carved out solar specifically for the planning board. So, um, and, and you, I think you also carved out the W V one.
Correct.
For the planning board.
Yep.
We should in a related activity, maybe not in a town meeting, discuss the roles of the boards in.
Sure.
In, in land use.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
Well, it comes up with Article fifteen.
Well, yeah, that's why I said.
Yeah.
In Article fifteen, we made some specific. And in, in the way this is article uh written in the use table, it was headed toward the Z B A, which is, okay, why? But I, I don't, I mean.
Yeah.
What was the broad thought process? Um, and we should, at least in our minds, understand that, whether we articulated it in the bylaw or not.
Yeah.
But then the other issue is.
Right.
Rules and regulations.
Of the, of the zoning board.
And the question I have always had is rules and regulations don't apply to one. I don't know, do they apply to the board or do they apply to the zoning bylaws? So, my original thought was, when we were writing the rules and regulations, they were rules and regulations for land use adjudication, not for one board versus the other. But that's not the way they have been implemented or evolved.
Okay.
And part of it too, yeah, was we really felt it was important, the planning board, to have rules and regulations.
Right.
Zoning board, I think, wasn't, that was not something they were as interested in.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So those are just questions about.
Doesn't mean they couldn't be universally used by both and we could.
Yeah.
We could change it in that regard.
They use the zoning bylaws, just like.
Right.
We use the zoning bylaws, so.
Yeah.
And the rules and regs, so.
And I, I have no issue if these conversations lead us to a place that says, you know, maybe these are more appropriate in front of the planning board or maybe they're more.
I don't, I don't.
No.
What, what is the decision criteria was more my question.
The, I, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't have my heart set on it going there. I think it was just historically, when you look at Article fifteen and why the planning board wanted to keep solar, keep redevelopment in the W one V R district, it was, well, okay, so for solar, I feel like you guys are. I'll use the word expert, even though I feel like some of you don't feel that you there are there.
More cases.
Right, right.
We have more experience.
It's repetition.
But the problem we have is then where you insert the variance. One time we, we followed one path.
Yeah.
And another time, we followed a different path.
Right.
With zero twenty-five, they went and got the variance, then came back. With zero Maple Springs, it was decided because there's a variance, they did the whole application.
Right.
I, I have.
Gotta sort it out.
I have no strong feeling one way or the other, except we should do it the same way.
Sure, consistency. Okay.
So we should clarify that in these two rewrites.
Sure.
Who's the permit granting authority?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And, yep, and right now, the, the way it's presented is the Z B A, but it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to make its way to town meeting that way.
And then, and the reason when I raised my hand about the other one, I still think it's really unclear in the other article.
Mm-hmm.
Which, how do you make that decision? Mr. Turner needs to have clear guidance.
For sure.
On where to send it.
Sure, totally agree. Um, okay.
And if, if Nazzy wants to do all the solar applications.
How about it?
Have that.
Understood.
I don't think, well, that's a different comment. I don't know that there's gonna be a lot more with the federal changes and federal funding.
Yeah. Tax credits are disappearing. A lot of the zoning freezes we had for these type of projects are, are pretty much either expired or are not being constructed on.
Well, we may start seeing battery storage on a commercial level coming.
Which is solar, under the state bylaw, or under the state law.
Includes, yeah.
But it, but that's where I think the.
Okay.
But if we need to. Right, if we need to start transitioning to looking into that for the spring town meeting, it's definitely a conversation we should have.
I don't know that they digress because I think it goes to the heart of these.
Yes.
Two relines.
Right, agreed.
Right, and we could probably go off on solar a little longer, like, you guys might not have the ability to permit any of it in the near future. But, um, uh, continuing with contractor bays. So, uh, the purpose, again.
What did we decide? You're gonna write it to go to rules and regs, or you're gonna write it as a, as a?
Oh, um.
If you write it to rules and regs, it has to be the planning board, because.
Well, no, or, or he could.
Or, or we have the Z B A adopt rules and regs as their, their standard of practice.
Okay.
Well, it could, yeah, it could be.
Okay, so.
A blanket thing for our rules and regs could be for both departments or both boards, excuse me.
So, right now, you're gonna go ahead and hold massive zoning bylaw? Until you come back with a different.
Versus rules and regs, okay.
Right. I, I think if, if this is a major concern of the town boards right now, that we get something in place for contractor bays, let's continue moving forward with the zoning bylaw changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, these are locations for small-scale contractor operations. So we have, I, I've identified use limitations. So I say that the principal activity shall be conducted within a fully enclosed building, so no work outside of the building. And then additionally, no fabrication, processing, or vehicle equipment maintenance outdoors, uh, except in incremental loading and unloading. And then I also say hazardous material stored or handled uh should just be per the applicable regulations. Outdoor storage, um, so this is really something that was drilled, driven by the building commissioner. He saw a, um, maybe not a desire, but a potential, um, a potential use that would not involve, um, large, or not large buildings, cuz they're usually limited, but a, uh, the reduction in number of buildings if you allowed outdoor storage to be associated with these type of uses. And then I just, uh, further go on to limit it to ten percent of the lot area or twenty-five hundred square feet so that someone can't come in and make the entirety of the rest of the lot outdoor storage. So, uh, we provide some screening, uh, requirements for the outdoor storage. And on top of the screening, we require some plantings to go around them. And then if you're storing anything within these areas, it can't uh be above the fence height that's identified. So, someone wants to come in and put in an eight-foot fence, nothing above that. Uh, I think it's just going to mainly create an aesthetic of the property that looks good. So, and I know a lot of the conversation was kind of around parking for a lot of these uses. So vehicle and equipment parking, uh, you need to have adequate onsite queuing for all service vehicles and no overnight idling. That is something you normally see with like, um, like, I don't wanna say contractor bays, but a lot of these like heavy storage-type buildings is that someone comes, they drop something off, they've met their D O T quota for hours they can drive, and then they stay in the parking lot and idle all night or whatever it may be. Um, okay, so hours of operation, uh, this is something that I'm really think we could be flexible on. And I'll say flexible as in, I mean, we could amend the numbers that I have here. Six A M. I think is kind of appropriate, cuz a lot of these people are coming in, getting ready for the day, and then heading out to a site. I have nine P M. I, I, I really see no issue with, you know, dialing that down. I imagine a lot of these operations, you know, work on a normal three thirty, four, five o'clock. But I wanted to open up the discussion. I also have Monday through Saturday, um, and then gave some flexibility to the Z B A or planning board, if that's the way we wanna go.
Special permit granting authority.
Thank you.
Whoever it is.
Thank you. The S P G, S P G A. Um, okay. So I have some noise, lighting, and emissions. Uh, I think we could just easily cover that with, um, you know, what we already require under site plan review, but wanted to give us the ability to, uh, go a little bit stricter if we wanted to.
Certainly should be night sky compliance and, and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. So I, I put it in there so we could go a little bit stricter than what we have under site plan review. But if, if we're fine with site plan review, that's, that's one thing we can do. So conversations with the building inspector kind of went like, when you're looking at these type of operations, you have five or six users of the contractor bay. The usage of dumpsters, he felt would be, having a shared dumpster would become an issue fairly quickly.
We need to deal with trash remediation.
Right, right. And, and his thought was, if I have two units, I might fill up that dumpster and someone's gonna get upset that I've filled up the dumpster, now there's nowhere to put the trash. So what I've identified is, uh, one, the dumpster should be screened or covered. And then two, you should provide a dumpster for each unit.
One per unit.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, whether it's a dumpster or a, um, a container, appropriately sized container.
Okay.
Well, I'm just thinking, depending on.
What kind of work to do.
What kind of work you're doing, maybe just a big, one of those big blue things that you get. But you have to have a place to put it.
Yeah, yeah.
Each, each unit, that's the problem with conserve. They'll say, well, we'll take care of it. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, how?
Yeah, and I think we kind of get covered in that with the screened and covered. It kind of puts it into a space that they have to address it.
And it, and it's one per unit and.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna put a dumpster, you wanna put a dumpster in there, you wanna put a aluminum garbage can, it doesn't.
A receptacle, yeah.
Yeah, and I not talking about other applications, um, you know, there are uses that may not produce a lot of waste where you could actually fit it inside of the contractor bay. And the dumpster is attached to a forklift and they dump it into.
But you don't know a priori who's gonna rent.
Right.
Who's gonna rent the space.
Right.
So if we do a site plan special permit.
You get to do a condition.
You have to assume.
Worst case.
Worst case, that there's place for somebody to put their garbage.
Yep, and I think we cover that with the, the dumpster per, per unit. I mean, we I don't think we wanna get into the size of the dumpster or anything like that, but.
That's, that's, that's why I'm saying it.
Depends on what they're doing.
Yeah.
Appropriate for the use.
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Space has to be there.
Yeah.
And then if it's gonna be a dumpster, you gotta have straightened access from the truck.
Yeah.
That would then design site layout.
Yep.
Design standard under your cursor right now.
Yeah.
Overhead doors oriented away from residential uses. We found with this, the one that we just approved, or just are in the throes of approving, that putting the, the doors facing the residential
area.
Abutter.
Yeah.
Worked to the residential abutters, um, advantage, I think. Cuz it put the building farther away.
Farther away.
Because you got parking between it and the, so I think that there's, there's a sort of unintended consequence. That they spun the building around and it pushed the buildings away from the residence, and I thought that was beneficial.
Okay.
But it put the doors facing the residence, so. I understand the, the, the intent here is to get the noise and that big wide opening away from the, you know, not this big mouth, you know, facing the residence.
That would be a case of where the S P G A could look at the site conditions. You need to give a latitude for.
Putting it either way.
Requiring.
Right.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
But it needs to be specifically approved one way or the other.
Yeah, and I get, I, maybe facing away is the wrong term, because like you could have just turned the one that we're currently looking at ninety degrees. Right now, the overhead doors aren't facing a residence, but it also changes.
Yeah.
I guess it's all site, site specific.
Really, it's very site specific. That's where it's, it's difficult to do these design guidelines and really know that you've covered every possible base and had a positive effect.
Sure.
You need to give the S P G A. You need to give the SPGA discretionary authority to minimize the impact. But this is not gonna go in a residential area anyway. I thought that's where you started.
Could be adjacent to a residential use.
It could have, but, yeah, it could, could have bought a residential lot.
You need to, you need to give, you need to give the authority.
Discretion.
Discretion to minimize the impact on the abutting properties.
Sure. Um.
Building orientation is, is gotta be approved, subject to something.
Subject to, um, limiting the detrimental impact on.
Abutting.
Abutting properties.
Properties, yeah. I don't know if that's.
Something like that.
That's a measurable, um.
Yeah, and it's gonna vary.
It's gonna be very subjective.
Very different, you're abutting, abutting residential.
But then you give some discretion to the, uh.
Permit granting authority.
Right, right.
Okay.
Or, or you write away, one of the problems we have right now is, is the planning board is an approval granting authority. Can't waive requirements. If you write the ability to, for the SPGA to waive it, rather than get a variance.
Right.
That gives some more flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, yeah, good points. Um, so finding SPGA must find traffic impacts accessible, acceptable. Uh, outdoor storage minimized, screened, and project meets site plan review standards. Um, I mean, that, that last one kinda goes without saying, as they'll, they'll likely be SPR with a special permit. Um.
Outside storage and dumpster, going back to, how, how is rodent control addressed in the bylaws?
That's a good question.
Road control?
Rodent.
A rodent control. I don't think we touch upon it.
Board of Health, do they have?
Probably Board of Health.
This is not in the zoning bylaws, it's really not a zoning issue.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't it really Board of Health, though?
Yeah, but is there a zoning, I mean, or it's just a Board of Health issue?
Yeah, there's nothing in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Maybe there's not supposed to be, is that?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying to me?
There's the generic kind of health, safety, and welfare, but, but nothing.
So we don't need a zoning bylaw that deals with, with.
I think it's Board of Health.
Design.
I would think that it would.
There's not a design requirement for rodent control or.
I don't think so.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's a Board of Health or animal control issue.
Cause where would it be?
Well, that's why, but, yeah, do, we don't, so you're saying we don't need to address it?
I think it's Board of Health.
I'd agree.
Because who, 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 uh, Walmart has rodent control around the building, because they sell food.
Yeah.
That's not under jurisdiction.
Yeah.
CMS has rodent control, because they get the trash.
It's the trash, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to have a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Um, okay, so, and then I, I, so that's one of the findings, I think, the SPG, SPGA should make, is the impacts in site plan review. Uh, conditions, I think, that maybe should be imposed. Um, conditions on the outdoor storage, the hours, number, type of vehicles. Um, and I, I was thinking a required periodic compliance review. And I was, I was wondering if you tie this into like a, like a year-to-date type avenue, or if you try to tie it into having the contractor bays be their own use. And then consider that like a change of use. If the contractor bay itself had its own, uh, described use, or prescribed use.
But what's gonna, what's gonna take, take that as the market?
Right.
Yeah.
But I al, I almost give you the latitude of saying, anytime a new tenant comes in or out of that building.
Comes a use change.
It, and then you have a right to review for compliance.
Then you gotta, you gotta redefine what a use change is.
Or, or you make it a licensing requirement.
Right, or.
License is a requirement of the bay.
Yes.
Better than a use change.
Yeah, that's not, but then you have to just get an applying, get a license for running your contractor bay.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be owner's.
Would it be, would it be from the building department?
No, the license, licensing is the select board, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't be the planning board.
Yeah.
Or the ZBA. I don't, I'm not sure the select board wants to weigh in on that.
I'm sure they don't.
Is there anything to be gleaned from what happens with rental properties, where they have to pay a fee and be?
Yeah, they do that yearly.
Right.
Yeah, it's residential, though.
And they have a residential.
There's anything to be gleaned in the, the process that they go through.
Yeah, I mean, well, then maybe that makes it just more appropriate that you do periodic.
Yeah.
Once, once a year.
And you have prohibitions about what you can't use them for.
Right.
Storage of hazardous waste, whatever.
And there, I was gonna add one more thing, cause I think there's a lot of contractor bays in these storage facilities.
Oh, they're, they're using a storage unit as.
Self-storage units.
Yeah.
Think that should be prohibited.
There's a lot of these, uh, fly-by-night contractors, they're working out of you, they get their materials stuffed in there.
Yeah.
Who knows what they got.
I think that should be prohibited.
Living in them too, probably.
Uh, yeah, well.
It's a little tough.
That's a good point, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Anyway, those, that's just input. I, I think that we're going in the right direction.
And then I think I was thinking, uh, maybe we were on the same wavelength on this one. I put waivers, uh, SPGA may waive specific standards where compliance is impractical or, and/or the intent is met. So maybe that's your way of.
Right.
Of moving through that obstacle.
Because i, in most of the current bylaws that we have to deal with, there's no ability for us to grant waivers.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's, that is really tough.
Which means everything becomes a variance.
Yep.
Which is not the intent of variance.
No, no.
Right. Um, okay, so then I have amend Article nine parking, contractor parking, uh, one space per thousand square feet. That's the general rule Paul has been going by. Um, and then I have plus one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of office, which, um, it seems like the, the way that the zoning board of appeals has handled these, and maybe the way that, um, seems to make sense, is that you require a office-type area to be associated with the contractor bay itself. I think you see a lot of use cases where someone rents out one of these spaces. Um, and then somewhere in the space, usually it's a mezzanine, they make an office for an employee to work out of. Um, I think the zoning board has recognized that, and they've just already required office space to be part of these, uh, proposals. So, one space per thousand square feet of storage, one space for two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of office area, and then a minimum of three spaces per tenant. Um, thinking that there's a worker pulling up, there's an owner pulling up, and then maybe one person working inside the actual unit. And then, uh, space for a company vehicle to be stored on-site. So, basically four spaces per, uh, contractor bay. Um, which I think.
We'll say that the, one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of office area, the occupancy rate per the building code for office areas, uh, one person per hundred square feet.
Okay.
That is, that's building code.
Okay.
Um, for figuring out how many people, how many occupants you can have.
But this, you would say this is a different kind of office, so you may, you could make a different assumption about how many people would.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that has any bearing on this at all.
No, but you could.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Yeah, the building code, the, um, in the egress requirements, has occupancy rates based on use, and.
I will say this has gone in front of the building commissioner, he didn't identify that.
He may have come up with those numbers, so.
Yeah.
In which case, ignore what I just said, but that's, there is that to consider.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we got, you know, potentially four spaces per contractor bay. And, and the reason we're not so worried about seeing a, I'll say, a very large building, is we're seeing a lot of these contractors, uh, trying to stay under the certain size limit, so they don't have to sprinkle the building.
Exactly.
With a fire suppression.
That's why the one that we just saw is two buildings.
Right.
It's not the tenant, it's the, it's the builder.
Um.
I assume there's prohibitions about, you know, no retail sales, no, you know, someone who's warehousing, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just some prohibitions.
Yeah, you can't open a bar.
I think that's a good one, no retail sales, no, no sales, no wholesale, no distribution, no sales, no distribution.
They need to talk to you about more parking, more trash, more everything.
Yeah, I, I think if we were going to entertain a proposal where, and, and again, under site plan review, parking is something you guys have full control over. So if someone came to you with a project and said, hey, I wanna use my two-hundred-and-fifty square feet as a showroom, where maybe I'm not selling anything out of it, but like, the, these are the materials that we could, I don't know, build your patio with or something. You know, you have it as a showroom, but I think you then need to consider, okay, if there's someone coming to this.
The public, the general public.
We need to consider additional parking, you need to consider maybe access to the building or that specific unit.
To take pieces of what they've stored in their contractor bay to the, to the.
To the site.
To the client.
Yeah.
I can use this, 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 or this for your pool deck.
But I think you write a showroom, really kind of some prohibitions about what they can use that space.
Yeah, that, that was my next question, and whether this is the appropriate.
I mean, if you have a contractor bay, where, what are the restroom requirements?
Well, we had the same issue recently.
I think we have one per, I think it's one per bay.
Minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do, does that go into zoning, or is that the plumbing code?
Uh, that would be under the plumbing, that would be under the plumbing. And remember, under.
It's Title V.
Yeah, under site plan review, you guys are really, um, limited on what you can do under site plan review for the interior of the structure.
That's right.
We can, we can talk about use, but we can't talk about layout and stuff like that.
Right.
Correct.
So. Um, so then, yes, I just identified, you know, we have to add contractor bay to a few places. And then, um, I didn't know if we wanted to touch sign regulations. I'm, I'm seeing that, you know, most of the time, these things are assigned for an address. It's not, I have quality contractor bays LLC, and this is like.
I think there should be no signs other than an address.
They're not usually assigned with, with all the different businesses, it's just the address, like.
Right.
One fifty-one Kramer Highway, whatever.
Because again, you're not, this isn't open to the general public.
Right.
And the signage, the signage for an individual bay might go on the door, and that's it.
Yeah, yeah, normally it's a piece of metal big enough to not interfere with how the door opens, so.
Right, yeah.
What, what about, uh, we don't regulate post office boxes, right, or mailboxes?
No, that would be the post office and the, the delivery people.
So, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put that, we wouldn't put that in the design?
Or drop boxes.
Or drop, whatever, they need a place to deliver.
You know, whether or not they've got a, a pedestal and a kiosk.
So that's not a design, that's not a design.
So, I think that's regulated by the post office.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, there was another thing I was thinking about, and I'm wondering if it's already covered under site plan review, and that was like loading and unloading. I think I had it in here, but I think I took it out for a reason, and I think it's because we identified it somewhere else in the zoning bylaw.
I think that is somewhere.
Yeah. But, um, okay, so that's what I have for contractor bays, like.
That's, seems pretty good, I mean, we can be thinking about it and whether there's anything missing.
Yeah. So, um, I think this one would be appropriate for ten-six. I mean, I, I'm kinda less concerned about this one, actually. If we wanted to go all the way out till ten-twenty.
Okay.
I feel like we could probably have something clean.
Yeah.
They want me to move it to six or twenty?
Right, yeah.
If we go to twenty, then we've got one on each of the next nights.
Well, because I think some of them may need more than one.
Right, the MBTA will definitely be talked about on the twentieth, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, why don't we go to the sixth?